Okay, I'll call to order the Fountain County Council for September seventeen twenty twenty four. First off, we have Department of Energy reports and Department of Health that are here to report tonight.
Dana's here.
You want, it'll be a long night, so we might not even get there.
Okay.
Well, I've got to go.
Okay, you, you tell me what you want me to do, I'll, I'll hear it up.
Well, I told you, we're gonna give us a report now.
Yeah, also, um. Talking with her, Aaron and I have been emailing back each other back and forth. I did, by, let me back up, I did get an answer back from Addie. We looked at going back to a, like a flat salary. We're not able to do that, they're non exempt employees, so. They have to be paid an hourly rate and then, um, or a time and a half like we're doing now, or we'd have to go back to the old traditional way, which is that. Fixed salary on fluctuating hours, those are the only two options that we have. So, um. One of the, so with that being said, um, Aaron Bruce sent me an email. Um, looking at potentially hiring. Two more employees, I'll kind of since read the email to you, what he was kind of looking at, might help a little bit with some of the overtime. Um, we would hire two more employees, they would be float, they would work a floating shift. Presently at this time, the full time employees right now have to give us. A forty five day notice. When they want to take time off, anything less than that, then they have to find their own coverage, but anything after that, they put it into the scheduler. And we s-. Law people to sign up for that. So, uh, that would give ample time for people, you know, for these people to fill in that, the two floaters that we're looking at. Uh, the first priority obviously would be covering the vacation time that people put in for. Uh, the second would be, um. If there was no slots open, um, as you remember, some of each week. Each shift works three days, so like, um, this week, C shift. Worked Sunday, they work Wednesday, they work Saturday, okay? Next week will be A shift, final week will be B shift, and then it repeats itself. So what we're, what has been some. Some comments that have come from some of the employees, they're willing to give up that third day in that week. To, you know, some don't want to work three days, they would prefer us to work two days. So the two that weave the floaters would fill in and cover those, you know, spots. Um, and then, uh, the third thing was if all slots are full, no one's off, uh, they would just be scheduled. And then we would, I would look at whatever. Day during the week is the busiest and I would schedule them in that time. Um, and I think from what, I think you gathered, you talked to some of the council members, they wanted to leave the twelve hour truck alone, they did not want to take it away. I, I think that what. Looking at this would. What they're looking at this would take away what we're, what I think where people are worried is, is the unscheduled overtime. Um. It would just be, they would have their own scheduled overtime. They would continue to work it, it's the unscheduled overtime, like when we had the positions that were open. Uh, that would be the additional on top of what they already were. Um, with that being said. We have been interviewing people this week, we've interviewed seven people this week. I believe we're going to have. One of those individuals will fill that last twelve hour position. Which means now all positions will be filled. That being said, the ones that we talked to are, are. Wanting to work and we're changing some of our rules, we've got a rule set in place now that. The PRN part time employees have to put in a minimum of twelve hours every three months. We're changing that to where they gotta do twelve hours every month. Which I think will help tremendously covering some of these shifts. But we're back to. The challenge where, you know, it. The challenge we're gonna get into with that is, is if they're not available, who are we going to fill those spots? That typically falls back on those full time employees. Um. I worry, I, I, I understand where this is at, we're going back to the two floating employees. What I worry about is, is salaries. The overtime, because they're looking at two twenty four hour shifts, so you're looking at, that's eight, sixteen hours. For employee per pay and benefits. I think by the time you look at what we think we might save in overtime, we're gonna try and pay that back in salaries and, and. Uh, you know, benefits, I don't know. I don't want to say we don't want to do it, I just worry that it's gonna drive up my budget even more. Some of that money may come down out of that overtime. But I think it's gonna shift and it's not, it's not gonna really save us any money. So I think with, when I talk with Colleen today, you know, a little bit trying to get some insight of where we need to go. I think filling this last spot. Is gonna help a lot, I think with us changing the rules with the, with the part time. Um, I think it's gonna help a lot with that too. Um, there's been some discussion about looking at their vacation. You know, I know that's been a talk about, you know, maybe, you know, right now, if you look at what we talked about, the policy of the United States, it's on days. Um. And it's, it's more geared towards eight hour shifts, you know, when you look at the county policy. And a lot of your ambulance services. I, I can use example, Park County was identical to us in the fact they were doing the fixed salary and fluctuating hours. She changed it to hourly time and a half. They had the days, same thing, after first year, you got five days, two through nine, you got the ten, just exactly like ours. It was not working out, they went to PTO time, they went to pay time off. And it went, they figured out an hour, so many hours they get a year. And that's what they used, so if they did, you know. I, I don't know what number they use, I think it's, she didn't tell me like seventy two hours or ninety six hours they get a year. Which equals to four days, four twenty four hour shifts, that's what they get. And, you know, they can utilize that however they want through the year. Um, because where you're running a problem is, is. Five days, that gives them almost two weeks off. Because of their rotation. You know, one week they work three days, next week they work five. That gives them almost, you know, eleven or twelve days off.
Hey.
Yeah.
Hey. There goes overtime, so what will we accomplish?
Whereas if you go to the PTO, it's lesser amount, so you don't have as, as. Much not paying them plus backfill. As that's where, that's where it's at, and that's, but I think that if we. Were going that way, we have got to sit down with the employees and we got to work together and come up with a plan. We can't just make a plan and take it to them, I think we've got to have them involved. And I talked with, with Julia, Park County, and she said that's what they did, they, they worked together with the council. And their council, the committee of their employees, the council worked together and came up with a plan. And they both agreed with it and it worked well for, it's working well for their county.
No, Garth, I, I think you're right. The time that we met with the employees, I thought it was a great meeting, they had a lot of input. They knew where we were. Did you think so, Kelly?
I did.
Jeff? And I, I think it's a good thing. A lot of them said that never happened before, ever, wherever they were.
And, and to go farther, we have looked at, I've looked at so many different schedules, uh, I talked with Addie, Addie has given me some other. Uh, schedules to look at, um. I've looked at going, um, to a, um, a twenty four hour on, seventy two hours off. Uh, we would have to hire six more employees. Um, it would significantly drop their wages, it would actually be, they would make the paramedics. Just using an example, they would make less than what they were making on the fixed salary and fluctuating hours if we went to a. Twenty four hour, seventy two hour, twenty four hours on, seventy two hours off. Uh, they would make, they would make less than what they did when they were on that fixed salary.
Much.
Uh, about five thousand dollars plus, they were making seventy five thousand and they would make seventy. Uh, we looked at, uh, trying to look at hiring and doing, uh, where. We hired six more employees where the, and they would do a rotation to where all of them would work only two days a week. That would cut the overtime in ha- almost down to four hundred and sixteen hours, or yeah, four hundred and sixteen hours. But when you figure, when you add the six in. You, you bring the overtime down, but then you drive up your base route salaries, so you're just moving money from one spot to the next. So, I mean, we ran it that way, we looked at, right, we ran the forty eight, ninety six. And you'll actually get, they'll actually have more hours of overtime on that forty eight hour, ninety six hour, so they're on forty hours straight, ninety six hours off.
Hmm. What? That's, yeah. Hey, Garth, when, when would we, uh? When would you have this meeting, because we, we need that, I have an idea for our budget. When would you like to have this meeting?
Well.
Soon, we, we've had, I know, but it sounded like he wants to have a meeting.
But we didn't have any solution. I don't know that we will here. Are you?
Well, I just thought after you met. And, uh. Just indicated here with our group, we met with them again. We kind of know where they are, there was one situation where, you know, we had a day or two, they had to do something for nothing. And that was kind of a questionable period.
And that's the one that I had asked Addie about, I think what we were looking at was, I think what Aaron was looking at is, is. Taking a two week period, coming up with like a flat salary for that, and then, you know, and that would be what they would be paid. And it, and, and so unfortunately, we can't. The only way you, because they're non exempt employees, the only way you can do a salary is it's a fixed salary like we did before. But then you have to do the fluctuating hours to figure out that hourly rate like we used to do, you cannot just do a fixed salary and not compensate them for anything over forty.
I'm afraid of that.
Exempt employees you can do that with, but non exempt employees you cannot.
Um, PTO, if you're talking about going to PTO instead of vacation time, how would that be earned, is it like so many hours per pay period or?
So, Putnam County, for example, um, they, at the first year, they get ninety six hours PTO right off the bat, and then they get two emergency days. For example, that's what they do. Uh, I believe Park County from my understanding, I don't, I can't remember what she said. I think they get a flat. No matter what, yeah. First year employee, twenty year employee, they get a flat amount every year. It's not like, it don't change according to the years of your experience.
I'm not sure I like that because new year.
And that's why I said, I think.
Employee gets the same thing as a twenty year employee, I'm not sure that's a good thing, so basically it's four weeks.
Yeah.
Plus two personal.
Well, it's, the ninety six hours would just be. Well, for them, it'd actually be more than that.
Yeah, four days.
Right now, one first, in our first year, they get. One week, that would equal forty eight hours that they should get, that wasn't twenty four hour shifts.
And we were looking at doing the long.
Fair, they have forty eight hours the first year. Two through whatever, they get the ninety six, I mean, that's the only.
And I think if, and, and I would say that's where I, that's where the meeting is done, is a sitting down with them and, and working with them on that. You know, in that situation to say, okay, yes, this is what suggestion, suggested, would this be what you want to go to? We've looked at. We've looked at, um, Addie gave me a, just got it yesterday, looking at that long weekend there. Um, taken where they would only work their, they work two to the twenty fours and work a twelve hour. Now you, now that the challenge you're gonna run into is, is either. Like this week is C shift, we're gonna use them as an example, tomorrow they work, they, they work three days this week, tomorrow, if you said Wednesday, they work their front twelve. Now you gotta find six people to work the back twelve. Because there's six people on duty. Or you could split it up and you could do two on Saturday, Sunday, two on Wednesday, two on Saturday. But you're back to that same problem is, who is gonna fill that in?
Yeah.
Now. It, it, it would cut the overtime down. Their wages would stay very competitive. But it goes back to. Who's gonna fill that in? You know, we hope, fingers crossed, that the part timer PRN people fill it in, but if they're not available, fill it in. Now that leaves that truck open. To full timers. So then that adds to their overtime. And this might be where this, possibly these two floaters would come in and could help that. But like I said, with that, you know, the question is, are we gonna do a paramedic EMT? Or two EMTs? Then you would have, then we'd have to go in and we'd have to add those salaries in that. And we're looking at, you know, putting two twenty four hours, that's eight hours overtime for each one. Each week, sixteen hours, so we have to figure that in. I can't tell you that, that the side, the overtime, this will bring it down, that's our hopes.
I, I feel like all we do is move.
That's right.
It's just a moving target and we can't pinpoint it.
You've got to have a plan before they meet with, anybody meets with the employees.
Yes.
That, um, we also need to look at. How many people are on vacation, we can't have five or six people, does that drive us up the hill time?
Right.
If there needs to be a limit and they don't apply. You know, plan, we. If you want the good weeks, you can apply a year in advance, and the ones with senior order to get those, and the others don't take off, and that cuts down in your overtime also, but you can't have six, seven people.
And I don't know that, I, I can't say it off the top of my head, I have to go back and look, I don't think we have that many that take off at one time, but.
Aaron had some figures where there was one, there were some pays where there were a lot of people off.
They were off and they were probably, that was probably the, where we had the vacant spots open too. So with that, that's, that's what, where it was at. Ben, you're right, I mean, we tried, you know, Jeff and I tried to make sure that, you know, there's not a whole lot of people off at one time.
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's gonna be taken under control, but I know there's a lot of things in here to be handled. Got to be updated.
Right.
And I look, two thousand and seventeen was the last one I saw.
Yeah.
Yeah. That, the last one, I found the sixteen.
That was probably by the first attorney, it was probably the sixteen and seventeen was.
And patient pay is gotta be updated in that.
I feel like that's where our savings is gonna come from. You know, they should, they are. Stop.
But I, like I said, we've, I mean. We've ran multiple different scenarios and. You know, I think, you know, like I said, I think we're just, we're moving money from one end to the other and, and, I mean. I think this right here, what Aaron is proposing, it's a good proposal, I mean, I'm not, not, I think it would. Six months ago, I would have jumped on this and ran with it because we were in the unknown, we didn't know where we were at on hiring people and. Where are we gonna get things filled and? Uh, and I'm still, I mean, I'm not against it, I think it, I just worry where. How much more is it going to, my budget's way up. In the. Significant amount of money and I know we're here to try to figure out how we can get it down. Um, I mean, I have, so I did go back in and. One of the, you know, it was asked amongst the employees, I think Jeff, Tom, Kelly can, and Aaron can say that. On the consensus is, is. They made a comment that they would not want a raise this year because they would rather leave for next year, they would rather leave things alone. So with that being said, I have new figures that I can give you that you can put on the, on the sheets, that are a little bit more accurate than what's on there right now. Now where you go from there, I mean, that's still up to you guys, but I'll give you those numbers.
Twenty two, page twenty two, I think.
Twenty two.
Towards the back of the calendar.
Everybody got to page twenty two.
Yes.
Okay, go ahead.
The adjustment on overtime would go from what I had proposed, six eighty nine, three twenty five. It'll go to six fifty one, six hundred and fifty one thousand. Uh, go around the advanced EMTs. That number will change, says eight, I'll change to seven, advanced EMTs. It's proposed, it was proposed, four fifty four, four hundred and fifty four thousand, two seventy two. That would drop to three hundred and seventy six thousand even. Uh, the EMTs. Basic, it says four, that will go up to five, would be five EMTs. Uh, that number will go to, it says one ninety two, one ninety two. That would change to two hundred and twenty five thousand even. Uh, paramedics. That will stay at ten. Proposed was sixty, six hundred and seventy seven thousand, forty dollars, I'll change to six hundred and forty two thousand even. Which will change my total estimate. So drop it down to two million, one hundred and ninety seven thousand. One fifty three even.
Two million, one ninety seven.
One fifty three. Two million, one hundred and ninety seven thousand, one fifty three.
What was everything?
Advanced went to three hundred and seventy six thousand even.
That's not with two more people that.
No.
And what was the?
He went with.
Do what, what positions?
I, that's, I mean, to me, I would ideally. Ideally like to have a medic and a, an EMT, because that would make that truck advance.
An EMT advance, not EMT.
Just an EMT basic, it'd be an EMT basic.
Totally increase that. That's possible.
Yeah.
And paramedics, so eleven.
Yeah. And I can shoot you those numbers. If you. Do you want that? Figure? Okay, okay, because I can email it to you. No, I didn't do any of that figuring, because I felt like we need to sit down and come up with a game plan and then. Once we come up with that game plan. And that handbook needs to be changed. I, you know, getting all, both parties involved and come up with a consensus. You know, that's what I was talking about, is a meeting, is, is, I mean, I think we've already talked about. You know, the other stuff, it's more of. That PTO time, if that's where we go. Uh, I, I think a lot of. Ambulance services I talked to have went to PTO time because of how they work, you know, they work twenty four hours versus myself or Jeff or.
I did a little bit of discussion.
Yeah. Yeah.
Hours versus days.
For us, it's different, as, and you're right, and a lot of them are changing to that. And I think that would, I mean, I don't, I don't, can't tell you the number, but I think we need to look at it and. Agree upon all of it, and I think that would help a lot of it. And I'm not, like I said, I. I, like I said, I understand where, you know, Aaron's coming from. Because it would help me knowing that. For the most part, I mean, like. Unfortunately, this week, the challenge we, you know, like tomorrow, I had a girl, I've got a lady called off her tomorrow on Thursday, we're trying to find coverage. And another person just went out on medical emergency, I'm not sure he's gonna be there. And so those are things that we face every week. Where, you know, a lot of times. Going into that part time pool, trying to find somebody is the challenge, if they're not available, then it falls back to the full time.
So Garth, a while ago you said a minimum of twelve. Twelve hours they had to work.
Minimum of twelve hours a month, they have to be, they have to show that they're, they're able to put in at least twelve hours a month, a month.
You know, that two week period where nobody did anything, they just stop, they're being paid. You mentioned a while ago, there was a two week period after, I think, a shift, I used to be.
If they, if they would, if they would follow the pol- the policy on five days, if they took their five days off, they would have two weeks off. Per se, because the first, that one week they worked three, so they'd take three days there and then the next week they worked two, they would take two days off, so they would. They almost have. Seventeen days off in a row, according to how the rotation goes.
That's where.
And that's where we're trying to come back to that PTO time.
Yeah.
To figure out if that's. Where we need to go to help with the savings. I know this didn't help, but I, I'm asked, where, where do you guys want to go from here, what, what are you? What do you need from me?
I think you better get together with your group, come up with a plan, give us some numbers, but right now, we're all over the place. You agree? Yeah, we need a plan.
Oh, I don't disagree.
Right, you said, sorry. Can you plan with some numbers?
Okay.
We'll, we'll have one more meeting. Go through budgets, uh. Before we have to look on the budget of, uh, October fifteenth.
So, what's in question is the overtime, correct? So what are, we're, I mean, I'm asking you guys this question, where do you want that number? No, I mean, we're.
Eight hours, one week, seventy two hours, another week, we're, you're gonna have overtime. And then I go back to the other.
Right.
Way, because someone were making six dollars an hour for that overtime, that's just.
Right, no, I don't disagree with that. So you do understand that's six fifty one, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I mean, I think you've got to look at all the options, because like you say, it's only a little bit, it's only a little bit, all those little bits adds up, so if we add two employees. Yeah, you're gonna do benefits and that kind of thing, but I still think paying them normal versus overtime to existing employee. You know, it still might be a little bit of the savings in the PTO thing, you know, it's a combination of each of these three things that are the difference.
Month payroll.
That's what you, yes, yes.
And the changes to see.
Well, yeah, I thought you said, I think, we need something new.
Yeah, we can, now you do, you guys do understand six fifty one is their normal overtime? Okay, all right.
But if you go to the two twenty four hour.
You're still.
You have to give up that third day after a three week.
So.
Mentioned that in the beginning.
That was. So if you're gonna do that, then you have to hire six employees.
Yeah.
And so basically, you're taking.
That's what we want to see is some mock salaries of each of those.
Okay, which I can, I mean, okay, I can do that. Right, I could tell you off the top of my head, the sal- the, the sal- the overtime will go to four hundred and eighty thousand. But your salary is gonna go to one point seven million. So you're moving money, you're moving money out of your overtime, put it over here in salaries, so you're just shifting money from one spot to the other. Which I, I can get those numbers to you, I'll get those for you. Yeah, I'll get them.
Total expenses would be if we added two people. If we added six and cut it to two twenty, or two twenty-four hours.
Now, my question is to you three. You three, you were there. You heard what the concern was with the employees. So you guys want to elaborate what their concerns was?
First of all, I, the concern was time. And. How much overtime hours that somebody else is not working? That could be. And before I go in further, I, there's a number of four hundred sixty-one hours.
Four sixteen hours.
Four hundred sixteen hours compared to that six fifty-six. I'm wondering how, how those hours jive, how are they working?
Okay, so.
I like the four nineteen, okay, that helped me out.
So, if you put everybody down to where they're working two shifts a week. You have to act, you have, you hire six more people. It would cut their, right now, they work eight hundred and, eight hundred and twenty-four scheduled. Hours of overtime, right now, with the schedule they're on. Okay, and that's what their, every third week with their, their third day in there. If you cut it down to where they're only working two days a week. You hire the six additional, it would cut it to four hundred sixteen hours. Instead of the hundred twenty-four.
I hear that that would help.
It would help, but it somewhat, you're moving money out of your overtime, but you're shifting it over here into your base salary.
How much would overtime be if you hired six employees?
Uh, if you hired six, it would be four hundred and eighty thousand, from where I did, off the top of my head. But then your salaries would go to one point six or one point seven million. Because you'd have to hire the six additional employees. So you're moving, you're moving money. From one place to the other. The other concern was, the employees were concerned about what, what did they tell you they were concerned about?
Everybody's feet needs to be held to the fire.
Yeah. It was everybody got, got to work their time.
That's right.
Well, they also were concerned about the cut in their pay.
Yes.
Then, like, the medics were gonna get a twenty thousand dollar cut. Your EMTs were gonna get an eighteen thou- or fifteen thousand dollar cut in pay, your advanced EMTs were there too. And I think they voiced their concerns that they didn't want to lose that money.
That's why Aaron came up with the scenario that he had by doing the salary, which we can't do. Because we're non-exempt employees. And everybody would get their regular overtime, not their special overtime.
Adding the, the. Uh, problem of them. They can't pay off salary, or was it they can't work?
They are classified in the FLSA rule as non-exempt employees. So therefore, you have two ways of paying. And we actually crossed this. Long time ago, and she just reiterated it, that, that there are non-exempt employees.
So the old way. They even lose money salary-wise. You said about five grand, about five thousand dollars, is that, that was the?
That is, if you go to, if you went to a rotation of working twenty-four hours on, seventy-two hours off.
But, the downside of that. The overtime pay was nothing.
Yeah, the overtime would come down substantially.
Yeah, and nobody wanted to work.
Right.
I don't blame them.
Well, they don't want to work, they don't want to work that rotation because they're losing money.
And somewhere, somewhere in between there, Garth, there's a plan. And that's what we hear, right Kelly? We, we hear the PTO and, and time off. And who's not working enough, who's not working certain hours that they could do? And if everybody was that minimum, if everybody do their, do their part, maybe.
Which I think, I, I guess, when you say they're do their part, what do you?
Work, in other words, somebody's not working overtime. As much as maybe they could. But now I'm sure that really makes any difference as far as the money. Because somebody else is gonna pick it up, where they have forty hours of overtime.
Right, somebody's either, you, you would hope that your, your pizza, your part-timer gonna pick it up, but if they don't, then your full-time picks it up.
I want to see it on paper, just like you did, I would like to see it, Jeff, would you like to see it on paper again? Kelly?
Sure.
I would be there, put it on paper, give us a mock view, whatever it takes, so we could see. The number, the high, the highest numbers with the highest-paid employee. And the low-paid employee, and how fair we are at the top and at the bottom, so we need some mock numbers. Okay?
So you want to look at the numbers as a, for the, they work two shifts a week? You want to look at, at two additional people?
And leaving it at two and three.
What's that?
And leaving it at two days, three days.
Yeah.
With two additional people.
Oh, the two, three, okay, so like they do.
Seventy-two and forty-eight.
Seventy-two, forty-eight.
If you'll email that to us, so we all have it. That would be great, I'd appreciate that, and Aaron as well.
Yeah, I've got the, I've got the numbers for the forty-eight, which is a six.
Aaron, we be there with it?
Uh, I'd also like to see the. Uh, figures with six additional people and the two, and two. Because I look at, I just did a rough estimate on the. Savings on the four hundred and eight out of overtime per person. That would cover, wait, salary of seven, EMT events.
Just in that savings.
In that savings. More, more like the six, so I, I want to see that and.
Okay, yeah, I, I've got the numbers here, like I said, you, when you, when you. I'll, I'll give them to you, you'll see what I'm talking about, when you see the numbers, because you'll see where the numbers are gonna change, they're gonna come out of your overtime. They're gonna go down almost two hundred thousand, but then you're gonna put three hundred thousand back into your wages. When you add, when you add six additional people. To cut it down to forty-eight hours per week. Yeah, I'll, I'll give those numbers to you.
I don't think we had a chance to really, ALS three sixty.
So what I can do is I have, uh, the only thing I did, I got, he finally sent me, put a plan together where there's the three plans, well. The LS six, three sixty MS plus, I'll make a copy of it, and then what I'm asking for, you know, equipment that's in the budget. He'll show you that, the only thing is, he didn't give me a breakdown, some cost for the, the, what I'm asking for. My number's a little different from his, so he's gonna send that, I'll email that to you, so you can see that.
Is that the ten-year plan or the seven-year plan?
The ten-year plan right now is a two forty-five. The seven-year plan is two hundred thousand eight hundred dollars, and then if we bought straight out. We were looking at two life pack thirty-fives, he put in here three power. Cots and then a power load, I'm assuming that's gotta be all together. Which is what I put in here, and you get a service plan was like three oh two. But I want to break down of that, so you can see it first before I let, I don't want to speculate, so I was, he's supposed to work on it, get that.
If we did a seven-year plan, how do you feel about that?
You know, um, I would be comfortable with a seven-year plan.
Because, you know, he never mentioned it the first time we talked to him, so I just wondered.
I, I would be comfortable with seven-year plan, because it would. Put us past the time that they're saying when they think things will possibly stabilize out, you know, they're talking twenty twenty-seven, twenty twenty-eight. We were to sign it now, we would be way past that time, I think we'd have a better understanding of where everything's gonna be at, you know, financial-wise.
If it's seven, you, you don't get a refresh at all.
Right, you, well, it's a face thing, yeah, that's the. Yeah, yeah.
That was the big dip.
Right, and you could hit four, three or four years, they'll come in, they'll look at your mattress, or they'll look at all that, and they'll change it out. Ideally, yeah, it would be nice to do the ALS three sixty program. Maybe because you get to change everything out at the five-year mark, but I think the seven-year program is. I think very, very good program to go with, if that's where you go.
Well, just. A reminder, it'll be the commissioners who will sign the con.
Right, right.
We will fund it, so we will be, we need to know.
Yeah.
Where commissioners stand on this program before we even.
Exactly.
Decide on, so we need to talk with Aaron and see. What his thoughts are.
And I'll give this information to Aaron too, and let him see it, and I'll talk with him on that, yeah, uh, I know. Brendan and Tim are up to speed on it, I've not had a chance to really talk with, with Aaron on it, which I'll, I'll work with him on that, show that to him. They are, yes, Brendan actually said in one of the first ones, and then Tim saw it also way back.
Yeah.
I think it was with you, you were there the first time, Aaron has not had the opportunity, but I'll sit down with him and go through and check through it, and let you see it. Yeah.
Thank you, Garth.
I got paperwork for you.
I still have it, so you can have respect, if you need it.
Twenty thousand for overtime and four thousand for part-time. Um, I put on there for overtime, the base hours per eight. Hours per pay period with nine. Pay periods left, I've got them all added up there, what the deputy director will make, my two lead CTOs and the operators. Um, as well as, and for September and October, November and December, on what overtime is scheduled at this time. Um, that leaves me a little bit of cushion for part-time and overtime hours. And again, some of that will change as well, due to, I've got one part-timer that has been working part-time and the overtime hours versus. My full-time individuals working. I have one part-timer that has, needs eight more hours of training before she's let go, she does work for the Lafayette. Police Department for their dispatch as well, we've got a possible. Kiger subject, she's still in training, she just finished her EMD course, so she has been on the radio, so she made some time on the radio for the. Nine-one-ones and learning. That part, and Colson had just started to take part-time as well, he's just started training. So all these that I do have for part-time and myself will be taking. The overtime hours versus. My deputy director, lead CTO and operators, so subject to change is in October, due to. My other part-timer being full and done, ready to take over the console. Also want to let you know that I only have two days in November that are on the schedule, um, subject to change, there are no days off in December, subject to change. That anybody's taking on, um, I am also working console. Several days in September and several days in October, so there's no money being exchanged there. Um, just to give you a rundown on the part-time hour pay. Part-time is nineteen, my lead operators are thirty-four ninety-nine an hour, operators are thirty-two ninety-seven, and deputy directors thirty-seven, seventy-four. So I'm attempting to cut those hours for that pay down to the nineteen dollars for my overtime to be taken over, or myself working. Which there's no money exchanged there, so. That's why I'm asking for additional for the overtime and for my part-timers.
Dana, you got twenty thousand dollars?
Yes, sir.
In December?
That's for the year, I figured this out to the year and give myself just a little bit of cushion. Same with my part-time, I figured it out to the year. With a little bit of cushion as well.
And the very last one in the, in, in, uh. December, again, that this is another four thousand dollar. Another four thousand dollars for an additional.
For part-time, for part-time, that's all, yes, for all I'm asking in the December, yes. For the rest of the nine pay periods that we have left for twenty twenty-four.
All these are total from now through December. And it's. We can't vote on this yet, because it's advertised for our October meeting, the fifteenth, October fifteenth. And, uh, it's advertised to take this out of.
Do we have stuff in there to pay it?
Hopefully, that'll change in January.
Okay. Unless they renegotiate.
I will tell you on the contract, um. I was advised that there was some things that were said to Warren County. Um, that was false and not correct, so I did advise them of the correct information. That Fountain County has said and what we have and what we are about, um, so I do believe that they are. Talking amongst themselves about our nine-one-one contract. I'm not for sure where they heard that information or how they got that information, that's why they are very. Whatever I'm gonna say, step off, I should not wanting to do anything, so after I got done talking with certain individuals. They are all, oh, okay, that's not what we were told, this is, when I said that is absolutely not what Fountain County is about, and what they're not asking. So, with, with the whole nine-one-one contract, and hoping that, you know, with the correct information given to Warren County, but.
With new. Members on either side. They can work amicably to come up with a solution.
I agree, I agree.
We're looking for fairness on both sides.
It needs to be, it should be.
Since it's a flat rate to them, they're not paying their third of us.
But please know when there are. On the schedule, there are absences that can't, I do pick up that, and I will work it, I don't have a problem working in a console. So I will do that, you guys have any questions for me?
No, it's pretty self-explanatory.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Any other department hits? And, uh, I'll allow, um. Discussion on our budget for next year.
Dean and Dean and House with the new department system has contacted someone on the two day. But that hasn't started yet. She left it quickly, I think twenty five that. I'm not. Do they look at two weeks?
It's, it's on a week.
So they work forty eight hours one week, seventy two another week, but not. Not twenty six, twenty six, it's something like eighteen and.
It's forty eight seventy two.
Right, I know, but there's not, they don't have twenty six weeks and seventy two, right, and twenty six weeks and forty eight.
Then you say it was every year or something.
Seventeen weeks and seventy two and thirty five weeks and forty eight.
All these factories are working. Uh, like three days, one week and four days and that's me. They're getting overtime then on the second week.
They're over forty hours.
They get overtime every week.
Excepted on a week where it's holiday. Eight hours paid holiday and they work thirty five hours, they get paid straight paid for thirty five hours and they get. Eight hours holiday, but they work forty three hours one week, they're getting three hours overtime, seven, at least in our factory. Seventeen pays.
Yeah.
So that means case giving, uh, twelve hours overtime, nine pays gives them. Seventeen pays gives them forty half. Forty eight hours, so that you have nine days. And they'd be seventy two hours, so they get thirty two hours overtime, nine weeks, nine, eight, or it's like. That answered your question, girl. Anybody else have any?
Yeah, are you? Well, the commissioner for some reason. Wanted to extend the contract. Which is not mine, because we did a, a free movement nation request, but we did contracts and we didn't get this. Uh, anyway. The week that didn't, has not fulfilled their version of the contract. Are you guys gonna fund it so we can, so they can keep going or not?
Good question, Rob, hopefully you can zone in here.
And they obviously have, hope that they're. Not true, what, what do you mean?
Um, okay, so evidently there was a, an extension done yesterday with commissioners.
Yes.
And I mean, and we, both commissioners and the council have to approve everything with.
Right.
And I know we had a contract of, he said. We funded that money for the building with the city with the stipulation if. Uh, it fails, building sales, county gets reimbursed our money first before anybody else.
Yes, right.
And so, so we haven't been asked to extend any contracts.
Right, so that is an error and I apologize for that. What I was doing was exchanging contract language with Brenda to see if we could. Come to some agreement, I didn't know she was going to present it in yesterday's meeting. So that's just something that happened and I apologize, it was meant to be in the meeting. Um, I'm glad they approved it, but it's just not something that I expected. Um, the reason for the extension is, I understand the ARPA dollars, there are ARPA dollars. Is that correct?
Yes.
So the ARPA dollars were set aside, uh, five hundred thousand dollars for the Wega building, uh, which is the business incubator for the county. And we have been plugging along very hard, uh, we've got a. Grant from Indiana Landmarks, which is actually a sub grant to a national park service grant. And they've had a major backlog, and so we expected that grant nine months ago. We were approved for it, but it hasn't applied thus far. And the way the grant works is we can't touch the building until that grant, uh, construction release is issued. And so I've got DNR, I've got representative mayor, I got Senator Braun. I've got Tommy from, uh, Indiana Landmarks plowing all over this, and I just got notice. Uh, yesterday that DNR is complete with their work. There really should be nothing holding this up, we have a signed contract for the grant and have that since July first. But we do not have construction release. And so my contractors all over me, you know, we've got, uh, weather issues pending. And now we're coming up against this October twelfth deadline, what I can say to the council. Is that we have a firm contracting bid to complete the exterior, this is associated with the F two. And your dollars will finish the exterior, we also have, uh, a. Grant from the state through the two to believe the interior. And we have a tour tomorrow with the IDC to look at that and, you know. Have a conversation about it for next steps. But, so we have all the dollars we need to complete the building and to achieve what we set out to do, but we were delayed by nine months. For this particular grant. And, uh, it's because the federal grant has restrictions on what you can do to the building prior to them releasing you. That's what happened.
So this October twelfth deadline, what exactly is this deadline?
That was the deadline that's in your contract.
The ARPA funds were designated two years ago. And that, and instead it had to be used in, in two years, so. We have.
And so we're asking that, uh, we get a little bit more time because the funds are becoming available. And we're able to do it all now. Um, but we just don't have control over the government, you know, federal government agencies. And we tried very, very hard. You know, every time you have a delay, you also, costs go up, so that's what's happening. Um, you're not at risk, we are, do have the funding available to finish the building, once we, you know, get this released. So that part's fantastic.
I, I guess I'm just having a hard time. If I had money available to me, I would not wait until the deadline was approaching to use those funds, I guess I just don't.
So the way it works.
No, 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 I'm talking, don't we have, yes.
We, we can't touch the building, we did all the work we could do, up to the point that we could. We cannot touch the exterior of the building, or we forfeit any grants.
You would use our five hundred thousand, then you are not eligible for the nine hundred thousand.
That's correct, yes, that's absolutely.
And that is, I will go to bat for him that that is how most federal money works. I know whenever I do a loan for someone that's getting money through FSA or something. Say they wanna pay for the foundation and then FSA is gonna do a loan for the rest of it. They could not do the foundation until they've signed everything with the federal government. So that part, you would forfeit that other nine hundred thousand if you need start.
So in the state grant, you can negotiate those things, federal you can't.
Yeah, that. That's always loaded on two years ago.
We already have, I mean, the money's there.
With the contingency that if it falters, then our, money comes back.
And it's a nonprofit, and the nonprofit will serve the county bracket. I, I don't know, totally, I'd hope that they, you know, I don't think.
So is, is the city, what, what funding is in the city?
The city provided the funding to buy the building. And they're also providing funding for soft costs.
Okay.
They put in two hundred and some thousand of their ARPA money.
Right, yeah. But.
So all told.
Then did the city of Attica? Have dates that had to be. Their contract, when we go ahead and be completed by.
No, that's struck, that's structured differently, so the city of Attica provides yearly, uh, under a previous contract and the current contract. They provide their economic development dollars and their food beverage dollars. And under those dollars, we have certain targets that we can achieve, and this was one of them, the business incubator was one of them. So there's really no timeline on it. Um, if we fail at this, then of course they would have rights to some part of that ownership as well, because it was their. Initial grant dollars, but, uh, we do not have a timeline for the city.
Okay, so what is the agreement with the city of Attica or? Cause I, I've sent some notes or minutes from the Attica or you'd ask the council to extend. Their contract with Wega on December thirty first, twenty twenty four. And the city attorney said they could not do that. Because the contract was due December thirty first, twenty twenty three, and since council was changing. Current council did not sign to extend it.
What was the date of that meeting?
And just said that you said you disagreed with the attorney. And.
So, so we have, we have multiple contracts with the city. Five nine to twenty two or six thirteen, twenty two somewhere along in there. Cause he asked for an extension and I don't believe they want to get one, they knew need to get out of it. Right, so we had a contract for the land.
They knew to get out, yeah, right.
No, not true, so we have a service contract, much like we have with you. And that contract is for the same period that we have on with you, so that is. A separate issue, so we have, and that contract attributes the ceded dollars and the food beverage and its four specific projects. I think what you're referring to is we had a contract for the land. That the market goes on, we had another contract for ARPA dollars to go towards the farm store. And that might be the one. But we worked through all that, we, we don't have any.
So what contract do you have signed with the city right now?
We have several, but the three that I just mentioned are the.
So you're still getting food and beverage tax.
Correct.
To weekend.
And that goes to a pro, to the projects. And then we each year go in and say how we'd like to spend that money to achieve their goals and they say yes or no, and we agree on it.
So there are two hundred and forty thousand of the five hundred thousand that's been spent so far, what is that? You can't do anything to the building, then what's that?
We couldn't do anything to the exterior, so what we did is we, uh, gutted the interior and we took care of black mold. And, um, we shored up some walls and so forth, so.
So the interior is all done?
The, the interior is completely gutted, yes.
But it's not like.
No, we can't build in it until we take the storefront off. Because the first floor needs to be replaced, and in order to get concrete trucks in there and, or, you know, concrete and. Small equipment in there to do that, we need to get the storefront off.
So do you have a date yet to, you're supposed to get this nine hundred thousand, or you're still waiting here from everybody that's working on?
It's all teed up, there isn't a single thing left, and so what I do know though is from the date. That it was signed, essentially, October first, the federal government has to. So I think. October first is our date. They're gonna push it out into a bad date. And we've been pushing pretty hard to, you know, get it to basket. We have a signed agreement, so, I mean, I suppose they get to make on that, but highly unlikely. And they've approved every step along the way.
But you don't have an extension from. So our agreement, is that true?
Yeah, I apologize.
On the ARPA money, we both have to agree.
Well, the, the ARPA money has already been allocated, correct? I mean, we've allocated those dollars for that purpose.
Through October of seventeen or whatever the date is.
Okay.
It's already been the same as commissioners, so. Correct?
They should match.
Yeah.
They should be mirrored.
You have any questions?
You got in there, the incubator. That second contract. What I read today. That's where I kinda got lost a little bit. Was the five hundred thousand dollars that we appropriated back. Couple of years ago, year and a half ago.
October seventeenth, twenty twenty two, here's a copy of the contract.
Was mine was ten, the project.
Yes.
Without a label on it, the project. That's what we signed it. Did I see the incubator and then I thought, okay. There's another plan here, so. But still. Five hundred thousand dollars there. And you have the, you have access. And you're using it sparingly or using whenever, and Colleen gets an invoice. Each time I.
Correct.
The money that's spent, and that's what I've been, that's what I've been.
So what happens if we don't agree to this?
Then it's got to be spent by October.
By December thirty first.
Then considering again that December thirty first, that's when the ARPA is. And so it's no more after the thirty first.
And you don't have a signed contract by December thirty first to spend that money.
Well, it's highly likely we could spend it by December thirty first.
Well, we have a contract, if it's extended, our contract is with Wega. So that protects that side of thing for the ARPA stuff, I'm not an attorney, but we as the county have a contract.
Right, but I don't know, our contract is October, like commissioners for December first, so. Colleen needs to check that.
I'll send it out to you.
What's the other week contract that gives them two hundred fifty thousand dollars to hear for it? It's a service contract.
That's, that's for economic development, that's two separate things, but that, that's for economic development.
What economic development, as you've got seen with that? We paid more than five hundred thousand dollars and we've got really nothing plus this money. You know, it's just not true, it's not true.
You should have a newsletter this week, you can read the newsletter, that is not true.
Well, you're talking out of turn, so I get to talk back to you, it's ours.
Well, I, I like to see this project finish with a, improve the city of Attica. City of Attica needs to be economic developed.
It'll be a great opportunity for people to start businesses and if they need help with their current businesses. You know, all those services will be in the building. That was the initial intent, right, so.
That was the initial intent, but the economic. Forecast doesn't project that today because most people are working to survive. So I personally don't see where people are gonna be starting businesses because they're working to survive. So they're taking a job outside of what they were doing.
Didn't you vote in support of this the first time around?
Yes, I did vote in support of it, and you wanna know why I voted in support of it? Because I thought it was gonna be something that would have been done. Because I thought it was going to be something that would have been done by now.
I can't control it. A year out, we are.
And and then in turn, we're paying you to do economic development. When was the last time that you showed up here at a meeting? And gave us a piece of paper that let us know exactly what you've been up to.
In July.
In July. And what did it say? And I know economic development is not, is not black and white. And I know it takes thirty five years. Roughly to get anything to fruition.
It does.
But we have people that are asking us questions. And they want an answer for us. And we try to give them an answer. But they don't see it. I don't see it.
You can call me anytime. You can email me anytime. I've issued you a report. Jeff is on our board. He can speak to it. I mean, we can talk about these things, but accusing me of not doing my job, is that what you're doing?
Yes, I am.
That's absolutely inappropriate.
Why is it inappropriate? It's my opinion. It's my, it's my opinion. I am not going to have an argument with you because I'm a little more professional than that. So I'm going to stop it right here. If I had a chance to do it over, I would vote no.
And I would not vote for you.
That's fine. That's your opinion. That's your prerogative.
And Clint, to answer to your question about the two hundred fifty thousand for economic development. That we discuss when we get to the commissioners. That area, cause that ends a whole separate.
Last couple meetings. Carol here is doing a fantastic job down there with the bridge. And she asked for money and asked for money and what is, and they tell you about, they tell you about. That they'll give another private company. Two hundred fifty thousand dollars a year. For nothing. We've got nothing. And she's trying to do something fantastic down there with the bridge. The last Jeff asked for money for Hillsborough that month. Is that correct? He was told no. About we can spend money for other things that don't get, we seem to be spending a lot of money on. Baker Tilly, on all these others, the envoy, on wega, on Roger Azar, all this. Why? When does this stop? Cause that's my. And I think that's a fair question. And that's why when I talk to people in the county, that's the question I get. When is this gonna stop?
Not a fair question? That that is a fair question, because I've had people question me, why aren't this ready grant? Is the money going to wega? And not towards some of these projects?
They are going to the projects. That's why I don't understand what's happening. They're going to the projects that are ready. You have to be ready in order to put in this grant to dial.
I do want to make a point, though, when you're in, so I either consider, and I wanted to make a point in here. So the other communities are aware of this, that when it said that we are working with the Purdue Research Foundation and seven other counties. To run a growth planning exercise for the region. What that means is if you go to Purdue's research website, they have a site selector page on there. And that site selector page will put our property and our land on Purdue's website. For developers to have that. So those towns and those communities that are signing up for this. Are going to have their property and land on that site selector. And you're going to see the same probably you did then.
That's just not true. It is not true. I'm actually meeting with them. I know what's happening.
But this is true. It is true that they're going to be on the site select. But we just went to a Petersburg meeting and sat in the Petersburg meeting.
Of course, well, your Petersburg site will be because it's already published with the state. And so they will include that on their website.
So if you do the, if you do the planning with the other communities, so their their land is not going to be on that site selector. These are the kinds of questions that are not clear, that need clarification, that may.
I'm happy to answer, but every time I come to a meeting, I have accusations and misinformation thrown at me. And it's just not true. We are not engaging with the site selector site. They're looking at, they're looking at uh school capacity. Whether they can uh grow or have, you know, students at the moment. They're looking at traffic patterns. They're looking at code and ordinances to see if they're flexible and and able for growth. They're also meeting with uh the community leaders to talk about what kind of growth they want to see. So what they're going up with are. Maps of where they can grow and can't grow. That's what they're doing.
And I I I appreciate explaining that because I I do think that most concerning part, I mean, there was something that I come up against in the last year. By then doing this, just only the question one two. There's always something that's not communicated. There's always something. That nobody knows until it's too late, like the site selector page. So you came to Petersburg's county council meeting. And when I asked you there, you said, yes, if you guys do.
Yes, for your, for your manufacturing sites that are already certified.
Like is it's it's a duty to make sure that if other communities are going to do this, that they should know when they're getting themselves into, because you're not here on them. You don't clarify those things. You're not here and transparent, and this fight's got to be.
Well, we're not helping Petersburg because you don't want to be helped, so. That's fine. So I don't think we need to have that.
Well, I just want to make sure that if other people are going to sign up for what you have going on, they're aware of all of the other things that could possibly be going on.
Is there that much hatred in this county?
There's not, it's not hatred. I don't kind of announce it.
I certainly feel it.
Well, the last thing I've heard makes me nervous of all is. Right, I've heard from several other people that Rod has said that the people in our county will not go along with him, so he's going to replace him. I've heard that.
I have never ever said something like that. By the way, and I am for fun, counting my fifth generation resident here.
Goodness gracious. But we're getting out of that.
By the way, I just want you to know, I decided to come in here tonight and stand up for myself. I don't like this. I don't enjoy it. I don't think it's helpful. But I've been run over and run over and run over in council and commissioner meetings, and I'm done. I am working my butt off for this county. I'm also getting paid. I understand that. And we're working very, very hard. I mean, it's it's sunup to sundown. And you wouldn't understand.
Yes, you would, because they do it too. They're working hard too.
Rod, the problem is. We're being criticized also. Bro, it's going to. When we agreed to this, it was we were to get a quarterly support. At our meetings. And I think you've only been maybe one meeting or two you could give us a report.
I've been to three. I've been to three.
And you know, that was an agreement and, you know, people don't think. That. All citizens of the county are being taken care of. You know, I know Hillsborough, they're upset about the money for the sidewalk park. Petersburg being a grocery store. They have a building that's shovel ready, needs a new rough.
And we did work, I did work on that. And uh we have some issue with demographics. You can't. Get a larger grocery store to come in. So the better thing to do is to work on a local grocery store.
And so these bottom buildings.
I I'm just to clarify Hillsborough, I did talk to Rod. Involved some baby monies with. With the ready grant. To to help him out, just. Updates on that. And another thing is you go down to Kingman with me. And we met with uh their board. Explain the. Uh Purdue chip thing and and uh. Asked where they wanted to go and where they wanted to be involved and. And uh. We talked about quite a few things. I've been back there since and uh. They. They uh decided to put in a high student in. And uh. And that's going to be a big change for them because they have that burden of that down. So he has been involved in some of those conversations and Gary at Hillsborough especially. So uh. Just wanted to make sure. To be fair.
And I understand these, these are strategy conversations quite often. That change of routine based on what resources you have available. And what people are willing to do. So for instance, in Hillsborough. Um I was able to negotiate with Inda and the Hillsborough leadership. Um a path forward because they didn't have it. And then we went from there to planning. And uh we got a plan together that they uh they couldn't achieve because of turning radius and so back and forth. So now we have a new plan. And uh we're looking for planning dollars plus execution dollars.
Right.
And um one thing that came up in our meeting is maybe we could take some of our funds from our contract and help pay for the planning. And I went to Brenda and she said, well, you're gonna have to get permission from the commissioners and council because that contract was not written for that. And so Jeff piped up and said, well, they didn't spend all their money on ARPA, so maybe we can find some ARPA dollars.
This last, that for last meeting.
Right.
Kind of came to the conclusion that he did.
And so today.
Think so.
And so today I had a conversation with Gary and I probably shouldn't say the public meeting, but he has. Plans for a building that is uh, you know, ready to fall in.
Right.
And um so we talked about how we might thread that needle. And I'm going to another meeting tomorrow with the IDC. And pitching that they might pay for. So this is what happens on a regular, it's not something I can report because there's no final solution. But it is an ongoing, constant conversation to find solutions to these problems. And I have uh to do a little better job with Kingman. We just started conversations. We're hopeful that the growth planning will. Lead to specific projects. Hillsborough I have engaged. Um you know, I have with uh Petersburg, but it hasn't worked out. Um Covington, I I've engaged and they'd like me to look at new commercial. And so we're gonna have some further conversations on that. Plus, we're doing growth planning, so hopefully more. Uh projects will come out of that. I mean, a lot of it is Anna concentric because that's where we started and a lot of stuff in the works. Um and so I understand that criticism and and. I get it. So.
Well, here here's another problem as, you know, when when we get as you're meeting. And you discuss how the ready grant money is being spent and the public's not allowed to be at that. When you're using. Taxpayer dollars to fund it. The public has a right to be upset about that. They need to know how that money is being spent. They need to be able to have a voice in it. Even though there's a representative from all areas in the county. That that's a big problem of why people are upset because they think everything's in secret around here. And it shouldn't be.
So the way ready is structured, they have a regional board. It's a regional program. It's not county program. And so that regional board has elected leaders on it and leaders, me in this case. Um and they come into these meetings and they decide. I don't decide. They decide whether when it gets paid. In this particular case, they came back to us and they said, well, we've got so many projects, a huge number of projects. And we don't want the infighting. So what we're going to do is we're going to peel off some money for Purdue. And we're going to take the rest of it, split it equally among the towns. And when leaders want you to go back and take. The projects that you have ready to go. And present them to the board. So that's all we did. We took the profits that were ready to go. You had to have projects that were ready to go. And that meant. Uh budgets. Pricing. Plans, everything. And we didn't have a lot, but we did have some in Covington and Attica. And we did try and find some in Petersburg. Um and couldn't get anything going at that time. So it's just timing. And then so what happened is we presented that and Kelly was there. I'm not Kelly. Brenda was there because she represents the county commissioners. And then Brian or Brad Praying was there for Covington and Larry Grant was there for Attica. It could only be city mayors. I didn't make that rule, but that's how they set it up. And then I was there. And so we presented it and it was probably around thirty people. And uh they listened to our pitch for these projects and they agreed or didn't agree, and they did, in most cases, agree with everything. And so basically, the only products got that got presented and ready to, because we didn't really have that many, were ones that were already ready to go.
Rod, I want to ask you a question. I understand your. Purdue and the. Process they're going through in order to get money. For this new chip plant. Or they already have it. You've gone through this various communities. I was with Petersburg. Jeff was there. One of the things that came out of it was. On the wega board is a person that represents each of the areas. They were to go come back to you or write up. Those that said what what Petersburg or Kingman or Newtown needed. In order to um. Be attractive. To X amount of people. That would be working this plan. So a minute ago, through this conversation, I just wondered. Uh you, Kim might have brought it up. I don't know, but maybe you did. About Petersburg's land is already out there. For development?
There's a, there's one particular site that's gold certified with the state. For development. It's a um manufacturing site. And so that's already out there. It's already on the state website. And I would guess it's probably.
Is that within Petersburg district?
It's just down from uh, well, it's behind the uh. Prime cut.
Okay, um. The other thing. Was that um.
And by the way, those meetings, we'll know more tomorrow than any of the followers, but. Those meetings shouldn't include uh the mayor's and town board presidents from each community that participates in it. So it won't be me necessarily. What we're doing is working with these community to fill in the gaps because we don't. I think Attica has a comprehensive plan. Covington has and. Or Petersburg has an old one. Covington doesn't have one. So we're trying to fill in the gaps and they can show up with information that they've gotten from their citizens and. And, you know, be protective.
So there was some money during that meeting.
There's some money?
I'm just going to repeat what came from that meeting and a conversation I had to see if it's correct. And so. When I stood up at that meeting. You, myself. Mike Booth.
Yeah.
Was talking. And the conversation I had before, you got there before that meeting. Is that Petersburg was not receiving the equal amount of money. As maybe other communities. That was a concern.
Yes.
And you heard it at the.
I did.
My concern is. How, how are we, and you just told me maybe a minute ago, distributing this money? And if we don't have a shovel ready project. You kind of overlooked.
Well, I, we. We can help get you shovel ready projects.
We, we hold on, hold on for just a minute. I know where you are. I understand. About shovel ready. How, how shovel ready should we be? Should a community be? To get money equally distributed? How should we look? I'm going to answer your question, Kim. I'm going there, right? Okay.
Right, so you want.
No, I just want you to tell me how.
Right.
I want you to be ready.
Yeah, every organization that's granting money has slightly different criteria, but in general. If you have a full developed plan that's been priced, not just ballpark, you know, budget. But actually been priced with, then you're more likely to get their attention. Now, for instance, when we were working on the um market downtown Attica. We knew that we were going to be competing with some big players out of Villasville and so forth for this dollars. And so we not only did a full set of working drawings. And we went out to bid, three contractors to bid. But then we hired a firm to do an economic impact study. And those three things, we felt like you couldn't question. You know, this is what it costs. This is what you get out of it. And. Most of the larger cities have those when they go in for these types of grants. And so we wanted to compete. You're hanging out there. You're spending money on projects that you don't know are going to happen, right? But that's the gate. And they all do it. Carroll County's doing it. Um now on the smaller stuff, I don't think you have to go that far. And it depends on who you're working with, but I would do a set of concept drawings. And a pricing. So you don't have to do construction drawings. And you don't have to go out to bid, but I would definitely do a concept drawing and pricing. You have experience with Lily and others. Do you have any comments on that deal?
My only thing since I've been on the council is uh, and everybody's heard it more than once, is my favorite quote from John, John Wooden. Says when it, when opportunity comes, it's too late to prepare.
Yeah.
And I think uh, someone who works in the non-for-profit space, which is part of what government is, it's the non-for-profit space. You, you do have to put up money to be in a position to receive more money. And that's really tough uh. For counties like ours that are rural and aren't flush with cash. And so uh, Rod's in a tough spot, I run into it at the community foundation where I work, it's uh. You're always in competition with others who are bigger than you and uh. You know, you apply for a grant today and you won't know for eighteen months if you get it and. By the time they tell you, you forgot you wrote it because there was ten other ones that you wrote in between, you know, that particular time, and so, just think. A government position like Rod's, it's, it's a difficult position, he's, he's only been in the job for twelve months. And all of our counties were doing certain things, whether it was something or nothing. And so he's jumping on a merry-go-round in every town and every city. And trying to get his arms around the county and see who wants to move along with Wega or Wega needs to move along. Uh, with him, so. For me, I'm not looking to place blame at anybody, it's just a tough game that we're all in. And we're not gonna get from first base to second to third and home if we're not all working together and we're not all on the same team. And uh, I don't always agree with everything that all of our departments had say or what Rod says and people don't agree with what I say at. At the community foundation, but I think if you're willing to sit down and work with people, talk about your differences. Have disagreements, uh, still go out for coffee and lunch and dinner with each other, I think we can accomplish some great things, so it just. It's a tough game that we're in when you're going after our tax dollars that we've already paid. So what he's trying to do is get a return of what we have already paid. And it's, it's not easy to do that, there's just a lot of competition. The deadlines, the government, he has no control over what's happening with these, this federal money, he has no control over it. And uh, whether that's right or wrong, or if we have all the contracts in the right place at the right time and the right dates and they all line up perfectly. But uh, it's just as tough spot to be in, and so uh, uh. I'm not trying to cover Rod's back, I'm just saying he is, he's accepted a tough role, you know, in the county. And uh, I would not want his role in the county with the expectations that we've set, I have a. Three-page report that he provided to us uh, on June tenth of twenty twenty-four, something like, it was the second one, third one maybe that you provided, you know, for this summer. I have notes on it that he made comments about it and so there was some talk, you know, when do we get reports, well, I have my report. Maybe others didn't have it or forgot about it, weren't here at the meeting, I don't know.
We'll go back, conversation. Johnny Wooden, I think I'm gonna jump on that. My opportunity is here, it's now, here we go. Um, you know, at the meeting, at that meeting, I talked about infrastructure and we need to go system. And there were some people that I thought we had some miscommunication, that there was, uh, you know. Housing going in, that wasn't going, that we, they didn't like, they didn't want any part of it.
Right.
And you heard that.
Right.
And I know Kim heard that, and Jesse too. And so, what I'm asking here is, the money that was distributed, the eighty-three thousand dollars I was talking about. What did, what was that going to be used for? It was going to be used for buildings, right? Did you know anything about the eighty-three thousand dollar?
I didn't, I don't recognize.
But, okay, let's go back to our conversation today. Can we do that? So our conversation today, they just purchased a building.
Okay.
It's shovel-ready, they need a roof. And, and we were talking about ready one, ready two grant money, ready two now is this. Is that gonna be possible?
Not for ready one and ready two, it's already cycled, so they haven't issued the dollars on everything, but the projects have been selected and it's in the. Portal with the IDC.
So right now with Wega, how do we, how does Beersburg look? When they need maybe money or brand that they could start working on this roof, because it's now, not later. We would get, like to get this thing going.
Well, just call me, send me the information and I'll tell you what we can find and, and if you.
And that's what I wish I could do, there's so many times that I wish I could just call and say, hey, do you know about this, this or this? But there's, there's definitely a lack of trust because of the experience that I've had in the last year, if I've been here. And I, everything that I've been through and then this, this somewhat confrontation and the conflict that we had. And then there's just this muddy water that's never really clear and you can't ever get answers out of it, so I.
I just, I just don't agree with it, I don't, I don't know where that's coming from, you can call me anytime you want.
That I, that I, you said I don't understand, you don't understand that, that there's, there's muddy water, there's something that that's hard. Like there's, like, so, a- and then there's double standard, a double story, so like, from what I understood when we were at the town of Beersburg. Complimenting, you said, I, I asked you about your research foundation, I said, so does that mean? You offer that they put it to our comprehensive plan and we have no cost us. And at no cost to, the town of Beersburg, those were your first, I can go back and I can read them.
No, we don't talk about a comprehensive plan, that's a very specific.
So you, you wanted growth, behind you to the growth.
Yeah, it's regional growth.
Yes, so you went and then we were going to work with Purdue, correct? But, but you said that it would be no pasta to the town of Beersburg.
Correct, but it's not your program, it's theirs, so.
Right, yeah, I have a safe page, I understand what you're saying, but, but that was where I was trying to get the clarification. If we work with Purdue and they pay for our growth plan and they get all, they, they, so it's just.
It's their growth plan.
Their growth.
It's their growth plan and they're participating in their growth plan. It will not be specific for Beersburg, it's for the whole region, it's regional growth plan.
I've understood in just that one.
Well, and I understand that.
Clarify that in the meeting with you and I said, so does that mean if we, if we sign up for this conference, if this growth plan with Purdue. Will they put our property on the site selector page? And you told me yes.
Yes, for the manufacturing certified site, they absolutely will.
Okay.
Both putting our county and Purdue's hands in the great idea.
Right now with all of that going on and the amount of growth.
But, but you're not, you're not, you're not putting it in.
I look at, all the heat and growth, 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 growth. You have licensed water and wastewater operators in all of these dams, our license have different classes. Lots of us have a good buffer before the next class, to move up.
Perfect.
The tests are very, very difficult, like the, the class above, the one that I, that I have, is a class three. Actually, when I took my test, was thirteen percent passing. If we just keep hearing growth, 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 if we start pushing growth, all of a sudden, we're going ourselves out of jobs.
And out of our own town.
Out of my own town, like.
But that's the point of the growth planning, so Jesse, you said it exactly right. If your water sewer cannot accomplish or accept, or you don't want it, you can say you don't want it. Then it's not on the plan, that's the point of growth planning is to determine what's possible and what's acceptable. And I think it's something that should have happened, obviously, when they did the leak water district. You know, they should have gone through this process, so I have to give, you know, Purdue huge kudos. For them to be willing to step up, involve the eight counties around them and ask these questions. So that they're not just pushing things out and they can't happen or they don't want them to happen, I mean, that's what they're doing, they're taking. I think it's, it's not a lot of money, it's like a hundred and fifty thousand from the thirty million that we were given from the state. And thirty-five million, and they're taking that and hiring consultants and helping us through a process to figure out. Whether we can do it, whether we wanna do it, you know, how it all works, and so I think what they're gonna find out, for instance. The city of Attica can put a thousand houses, just technically, they can put a thousand houses on the existing water sewer system. Now, how they got in that position, I have no idea.
Your system can.
But that's the kind of information they're trying to find out.
Your operator's license don't cover that, you're gonna have to look at E plus. Can they pass the test or?
I have a question, Rod. On the, on the ready to.
Yeah.
On the ready to grant, how was that distribution done? The designation, your, I know that you don't do it, so what was your suggestion that they do? I know Attica's gonna get something, Covington's gonna get something, and then Wega is getting something.
Yeah, my suggestion initially was what we kind of ended up with in a way. But uh, then our board weighed in because we have a board and they didn't wanna give money to private citizens. You know, so we had a bit of a kerfuffle there, but uh, essentially what happened was we had four point five million dollars. And we had two housing projects and a business incubator ready. And um, so we determined with the mayors involved in the cities that those projects were in. We determined that uh, I forget the number now, it was two million for the incubator. Uh, and then one point five, I believe, is that right? One point five for the project in Covington and one point five for the project in Attica. I'm off the top here, so I didn't have that exactly right, so what happened was um. The project in Attica lost its partnership and so we could not follow through on ready one. And so we moved ready one dollars over with the permission of the entire region. We moved it over to Covington so that Covington could help pay for their sewer system that they had. Uh, underworks. And then we moved dollars from the housing project back over to Attica to increase their budget so that they could. Bring in another uh, project. And make it pencil.
So Rod, I think, I think that's where maybe Beersburg hears. Uh, lack of communication, they're getting money and that money got switched, hey, when's ours coming? Newtown, whatever.
No, I understand, but it, it is when you have the project ready to go.
Yeah.
So, and I think I said this publicly, we didn't, we won't be too upset, but I met with Songer and Manning to try and help that along. You know, for them, because they were interested in doing housing. And so I tried to help that along and I tried to get it to a point, HWC came in and offered a proposal. Tried to get it to a point where we could package it up and include it because I knew people would be upset that only Attica and Covington have projects. Um, it didn't work because they weren't ready to move, they weren't ready to move fast enough, and so that just kind of sat there.
So the, the other thing on that, they just didn't want, the, the rumor was, and was all through that meeting. Hey, we don't want section, we, we don't want that section thing.
Yeah, we're not.
You don't want any part of that, and so it came across that way, I'm not, don't get me, I'm not putting you on, to the spot today. But I'm really here to ask, how, how are we going to, how is Kim? Jesse, how, how are they gonna be able to get a little help on infrastructure? We got a ready, they got a ready shovel building. Uh, we need that infrastructure, we've lost a building, we wanna get a building back. We want a grocery store, we need a, a certain place to do that, right, Kim?
Yeah.
And, and she's working hard on that, she is, so Kim and I, I, we've already talked. She's done her homework.
Okay.
And uh, I think if, if we could see a little light, I had another call from a gentleman on the council today. They can see a little help, little light, where they give a little help on this. Then I think all these other things just may fall into place, Rod. And more problems, you're not, we're not gonna do this overnight, we know that. Attica's got a mess up there right now, three to five years, sure, we gave you five hundred thousand dollars to help that alone. Here we've got other things.
But it, it should help you too.
Well, I mean, it hopefully would help, I mean, but that's the thing, if we had a whole year of planning, that we could have had a shovel-ready project to be ready for. Ready two point O, but we didn't get to do the project of the town one, and we had to do the project that Rod wanted, which was housing. Which, which is fine, that's what came down from ready, I get it, you gotta, you gotta answer to them and you gotta answer to them, I understand what you're talking about. But that was where the E plus Beersburg is because you wanted housing. They didn't wanna work on housing, right, and they wanted to work on the infrastructure of the town and the downtown. And you wanted housing, so that's where you went and you weren't ready into that shit, I mean.
No, 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 you just said it, that was a ready objective, it wasn't my objective, it's.
You just kinda, you were like, well, I just don't want it, you just said that in this meeting, you said, we're not working with Beersburg because Beersburg doesn't want growth. And that's not true, it's not that Beersburg doesn't.
No, we're, we're not working with you on the regional growth planning there. That's what I said.
So Rod, and, and to, to follow up, one thing I was saying, and then I've heard this, is they just want, if you go back there. You listen to them, listen to what they want, and that's what you're doing.
We know, I mean, to be clear, you, we gave you the option to participate or not participate. And you didn't want to participate in a growth planning effort, that doesn't mean that we're not engaging or don't wanna help Beersburg. We're still, we're still there, we're still working, Tom is working on conversations right now with Mark. And so we, we're here. We haven't turned away from Beersburg unless you want us to.
So you really, you heard around, now tonight, you've heard a shovel-ready program or project we have. They're ready to go, they want people to come in, just like you want Attica to come in, Kingman wants people, wants them to come in. I talked to the clerk to Kingman about this broadband three, four months ago, after media I was in Williamsburg. And she was thrilled with that, but it takes money, and Jeff found out, so anyway. If we're getting all this community on top of town together, it could be a great place, but I think you have to listen. And, and, and somehow get these people to distribute this money equally and fairly, and I know it's a hard job.
And I don't have, I mean, uh, I'm not making excuses, I'll do whatever I need to do, but I don't have control over.
Sure.
The grant agencies and what they're willing to give money for, so, um, this has been a long conversations.
Thank you.
But I, I have a question, Rod.
Yeah.
The ready grants to four point five million, said two million is going to the banker. That two million dollars you're putting into that building, we, so we're gonna have three million dollars into an old building that.
Yeah, I agree with you, uh, that would have been a lot better, but it's downtown revitalization. And so what we're doing with that is uh, you know, state-of-the-art classrooms, office, rentals, uh, networking. There's a cafe, yeah, it's, it's a bunch.
That, that's. That, that's ridiculous. Two million dollars of that ready grant should have went to other things instead of putting it into an old building. And whoever decided on that is absolutely wrong, because.
It's chasing good money.
That's exactly right, because we put in five hundred thousand, you got two million, I assume the attic city of Attica's put in at least a half a million dollars.
No, they're there for the building. Hundred and.
Hundred and eighty-seven to two hundred fifty, somewhere in there.
Okay, we're two point nine million instead of three point nine million.
That's a hundred thousand.
It's not, it's not that much, but I will say, um, you know, we don't get that money unless the granting agencies agree. Right, I mean, it's their money.
But did we recommend two million out of that four point five million? Did Wega recommend two point, two million out of that four point five million?
Sure, and we had agreement with the region and we had agreement with the agency granting.
Oh, this Purdue thing then, Rod?
They, they did the same thing, you saw the product in Brockerville, that was four million dollars.
Four million, how many floors is that? Having that much.
Existing building and it was an interior build house, for four floors.
Also, along with that Purdue project, they, once they get all the assessments. Then they're the ones that designate the money for that particular area, is that right?
It's just a report, it's just an assessment, so they're gathering information from each region and each uh, set of leaderships. And then they'll put that in a report and a map.
Let's say it was housing, let's say it was housing, who designates the price of the housing? What, what kind of housing you gonna, are they gonna put up to attract other people? Cause I understand the people's gonna work that plan, who you could, would be from another country, correct?
Well, some are, I think initially some are, but then a lot of them are local, yeah.
I'm, I'm sorry, Rod, I'm sorry about that, guys.
Uh, Colin, what day did you tell me for that economic contract?
I haven't, no, I don't have the economic recontract, I told you, we need to on the back, what will we get? I haven't, no, I don't have the economic recontract, I told you the week it was on the back, what will we be calling?
But for the two hundred fifty thousand, that's the economic development.
I think that was June of twenty three.
But it's only fun.
June sixteen, February twenty three, June sixteen, yeah, that's what I read.
I'll need to break in, as we take a five minute break before we start it. Is, is any more public comment before we get into working on our budget?
Our budget is a little here though. You're just necessary employees like your paramedics.
I'm sorry. And, and that's what we asked the black, only to check on that, if we could even use that for ambulance.
Just stay please.
Right, and that's, I mean, that's something we asked to look into because. Um, we're not doing the annex, we will take that money and put it into our county general refund. Reimburse for ambulance, for, for paramedics, and then we'll have in our county general, we need it for emergency or something else.
Came out next year. It was very shaky, they were out on many times, all as they found out, oh, there's this much money.
The first round, I know we, we subdued the police and, and paramedics, but I don't know about this second.
If I said it, I would be wrong. Yes, I just remember the two bids that came in, there was like two hundred thousand dollar difference. Like maybe four twenty five to four fifty and somebody else's, six forty, six fifty. I believe they have all them.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
I just.
What you thinking?
Well, I think we need to be careful what they're saying. Very many dollars to revitalize any old buildings, it's just a new building, that's what definitely preservation. Or the name, you know, to redo this, change the bridge, or so, four hundred and fifty thousand, so much as it to do a new project. It's cheaper to do a new project, it's just like, it's cheaper to go and build, but that's not historic preservation. We have to keep that in mind.
And good point.
Yeah.
And there's two totally separate things, but I'm just saying that's historical.
Tearing it down and redoing this.
Not saying I'm following.
And there's money for historic preservation, but there's not money for, yes, exactly. Yeah.
Don't have that chance to talk, it'd be very much.
Well, my opinion is this was voted on before I was seeking on department council, so I'll say there, but. Do I understand it takes time? Yes, and do I understand that you, that I don't think that's very against you. Um, plus I think your limit is five hundred thousand, it's not, I mean, you've already spent some, so it's fine. I'd like to wait and see until the first, if you think that's a date. I mean, appreciate you asking about the little function you have, that's what people don't hear and don't. And they, we need, we need those short little nod, long paragraphs with long reason, nod, long, those just short little. Talking with this person, this, you know, and I know you can't say everything, because some of it's private and secret, and you know, till it happens, and I'll talk with it, but. I think everybody needs to hear those short thoughts there.
Yeah, I mean.
I hate to see the rug pulled up from.
So the, uh, the dollars associated with.
And also the other difference is that there's nothing to be given towards historic, there's not plenty to be given towards new things, you know, you can't do that. So I think we have.
No, it doesn't. So maybe I did the wrong thing, I felt like. So I just thought, well, I'm. Maybe that was not their choice.
Oh, Rod. I think that back and forth, like. Individual, whether that or.
Am I saying that right?
He's already spent some of it, so he's only two hundred fifty nine is what the question.
So, just so it's clear, I've got five hundred in the account, and we've got one hundred from.
Oh, I'm sorry.
But the one thing that I didn't say that, which.
I'm sorry, cause I won't make it here that.
You walk out, lady?
I know, yeah.
We still haven't made a headway on the.
I think we're two hours in, we haven't even started the meeting, we can't.
We're making overtime. Carol said who paid for this? Can't pay for this? You always used to have some coffee, you remember?
Kelly, it's very good, it is really good.
Coffee.
As if we weren't high strung enough, we need some sugar. Or no, I'm sorry, that was just me.
But you want some.
Presentations.
Exactly, gets our club members going.
Or presenters, not presentations.
I didn't even think about it.
But that, yeah, we're two going back. Yeah, they're like, we're still in there. We're gonna get stuff done this, okay?
Something, whatever it is.
Put your foot down. If there's a project, and I have to talk, I like Stan Wayne. I like Stan, I haven't seen you for a while.
Yep.
Came to the meeting.
Yep.
He's at Square. As always.
Good.
So, it's all ass, bro.
Kim needs to stay in here, so you guys can have it tomorrow.
Great, great, that's what, that's what I need. It's so good.
I don't, I don't, they, I don't, they took this out three times. Maybe a couple. Yeah, you got three meetings on one side.
Well, I get confused between when we get someone's piece of paper.
Yeah, yes.
And did they present it, or was it laying on my desk here?
Right.
God, or did I print it off at work and bring it with me? My notes aren't very good. Guess when I think I'm gonna remember something, then.
There's a lot rolling around in there.
There really is.
The file cabinet's getting.
Oh, it's okay, are you good? Can I talk to Taylor real fast?
I would probably, agents around there are.
Yeah, I can get no questions for me, and I sent her a text, because I didn't agree with her tomorrow. But I need to know, cause I need to book it.
He just left, I walked in.
I think it's always, we're just having a.
Oh, you did?
I did, they offered me a scholarship. Ten hours away.
Come on, wife.
You know who the assistant coach was.
Are you doing okay? Hey, listen, we just know if you wanna go to T three, we're starting smart. She's real excited.
He was at Bradley.
I don't know. I don't care.
It's hard to believe they took landing with them. I think you made the right choice.
We knew ahead of time who was gonna be at the, at the regionals, at the seventh round, who was gonna be. And we knew that.
Why you want some coffee?
Whether it's academic or athletic.
I'm about to put some coffee on.
I'll just have the gambling go back to this.
Right.
Well, we start right down the line.
Yeah. Okay.
Okay.
Like I said earlier, we're not gonna get through the whole book tonight. There's no way, uh, we're gonna have to have another meeting. You wanna do that first, and then I'll look at the calendar and see. Because we do have to adopt, so we've got, there are all our changes made. That's right, so we have another, we can make some changes tonight, that Colleen can help get his votes for the next meeting. And then we're gonna have to make more changes. Have Colleen put those in, and then that'll be emailed to everybody, and then we can tweak anything on the fifteenth. But the next night meeting, we're gonna have to make some tough decisions on salaries. What we're gonna, we're gonna have to move some, I mean, from public safety into county general, we gotta cut the highway department. Cause it's more.
There's, that's a couple things I need to talk to you about.
So, um, what? Maybe, maybe.
You wanna do a night meeting or a morning meeting?
I think that should, I think.
Okay.
That works better.
That's good.
Okay, so, um. I'd like to have it on the September thirtieth or the first, either Monday or Tuesday night, if that will work.
I'm good with either day.
First. Actually, I'm leaving the second and unfortunately, I'm on the last flight of the day on Monday night, the fourteenth, so.
You and your vacation.
Retire. Plus my replacement, that gives them a couple weeks to work without the NC if they can handle it, so.
So you said October second?
Uh, September thirtieth or October first. You have a conflict and debate, no idea. So what's your preference? There's no commissioner meeting that day, so.
Let's just do the thirtieth.
Thirtieth, Monday night? So the thirtieth, six o'clock?
Hopefully between press. And I, that I. Yeah, they're all about the usual. Yeah, especially on the annis. If those monies. To eliminate how those monies can be secured.
Well, that's what Colleen's gonna work on to see if we can reimburse the county for even the ambulance or EMTs. But commissioners have to. Yeah, here is the second part of that, commissioners have to agree, and we have to agree. If we put that in the county general.
You put nine and four eight thousand dollars in.
Well, it's more than that.
Oh, yeah, I'll be talking about the NHS still, yeah. And then we need sign on the Wega, I mean, if they don't have it, I don't know what our contract is.
Well, we're not talking the full five hundred thousand on Wega because of our use, so.
So there's one point three million right now that has to be checked.
Yeah, Attica uses all of the rest of theirs, we have one million eighty nine. Yeah, Attica uses all of the rest of theirs, we have one million eighty nine.
Our career is history, but we're, well, yeah, I just wanna make sure we don't.
We don't wanna give it back, yes.
Yeah.
We also have to get commissioners, yeah, commissioners.
It sounded to me like the feeling I got on their meeting yesterday was they didn't understand they had to do anything else, but they weren't, it wasn't top of mind with them. I don't know. I heard you correctly.
Yeah, I did this.
So I think we've gotta be the lead on pushing something through my opinion, because I don't, it didn't seem like it was an urgent thing to them. I think it is urgent.
We can reimburse county general, that I think is the best deal, and we can. Give it to Aaron to push to try to get a note.
I think the last time you said commissioner or commissioner stood in, wanting their annex money for. Anything with annex, did I understand you might say?
I had a conversation with Aaron, but honestly, I, I know. Think maybe he brought up something that was, okay, maybe. And I can't remember exactly how that. Yes, so. We talked about the annex money. If we can find a way to get that reimbursed into county general. And we would all be in agreement with that, you think you can get another vote? But if we don't, I'm just gonna go back to the. I don't know.
If I can say something.
Yeah.
You keep saying reimburse, when the reimbursement came out and it has changed since, changes every sponsor. We cannot do this. We cannot get out of one kind of reimbursement.
Well, I thought, I know the first round we could and I, I just wondered if they'd change.
You talking about convert the donors or us? Are you talking cares by horse mail?
Well, one of them, we reimbursed salaries from the sheriff's department and the ambulance. EMTs.
That's cares, that's the one we, the first transfer that we got with our money, the only thing we did. For almost a year was paid for body cams. But I won't get with us in weeks and.
Right, yes, we did the body cams, I know, and that I, you know, even if, I haven't paid for the ambulance and shit.
Not that we now have to get it together.
Okay, that's. Yeah.
Can that not be used for communications? Our radios. I'm just here to tell you, the one that counts time, the radios and that between five changes. There's gonna be. Lots of money.
But, you know, it's gotta be.
It's gotta be.
You gotta have invoice or something committed by the secretary, yes.
Votes and everything for what we need.
But if we get. A EMTs out of it, we can. To use that for next year for EMT as long.
Can we use that one for the.
So we.
Must be obligated in.
Yeah, all right.
Contract, but I would say if we have something from the, from the company signed with the tax on, that might, I got a note to.
But that's just added, you know, cause they, they change it all the time.
Yeah.
Counties say they can't spend the money and I know I've, I've read articles all the time about. Things of other counties that are able to spend their art money for and some things that. I find hard to believe that they allow them to do it, but then right offhand, I can't. Play, but I remember when I read this at the time, I thought, I can't believe they don't have to do that.
Wonder about the greater that you want for next year too, that would be something.
Yeah, I agree, we're a greater.
I'm seeing big ticket items if they have done.
So if you could talk to him before leaving off the tour. Then also.
Cause it's kind of more like health and safety. We got the nine one one, he has a.
I don't know, yeah, that makes sense.
And then the other thing we wanna do that I is. You know, we, we had our public hearing on. The ERA and the.
Abatement.
Tax abatement. And I asked Hayward if we had to do ten day notice on that or forty eight hour to take a vote whether we're gonna rescind or. Modify or. The way it is and he said he had problems with his phone, didn't get emails and he didn't respond until. After the forty eight hour notice for her to advertise it on today's meeting, that, that probably should be. People wondering why we got our hearing and we haven't voted on it, so.
Is that the September thirty meeting?
Yes, let's do that, is everybody in agreement with that?
Sure.
But instead, forty hour notice, is that? I'll put it on the website and.
Yeah, I see, and, and. If you tend to do it at a normal meeting, you could just put it on the agenda and address it in the same fashion as normal items.
And we know, we spent, we noticed, advertised the notice and the table, so. I would say if I put on the website and posted on bulletin board and column paper, that should be sufficient.
Got all the information, I mean, the maps are changing, but now, Tom, you told me that. Petersburg said they had not made contact by. At that street.
I, no, of course I was, I asked the. Lieutenant Nelson, President. So, Mark, at a function, he said, no, they didn't show up at a meeting and burn it from.
But I thought they contacted the court treasurer, the maps or something, court treasurer called you, see, so.
Petersburg court treasurer called you or is the company?
The Petersburg attorney clerk called me.
Okay.
That says they're wanting to change.
I, I asked him, I asked him if they came to.
I don't, so they contacted me one.
He knew about.
If I knew anything about it, so. If we want their jurisdiction on those properties that they were applying within their jurisdiction.
Well, Jesse, you were there. That last town council meeting, I asked, the porter was there, the clerk was there, has anybody contacted you about any sort. Within the jurisdiction of Petersburg or Van Buren Township and they said no, right?
Yeah, that's where I'm gonna be. The numbers are.
I was getting things called and Jesse was on vacation, I'm high.
I also heard from zoning, you know, Jeff, that what he done. So it would, would be enough to master guard if they had any information. You know, they could contact master guard and that could be their own prerogative, but. Petersburg apparently didn't know anything about that clerk or anybody else.
Yeah, no, that was just. Should we have Roger here to ask him about construction permit or if any. Thing changes with this new map that we have with all the.
The permit.
Yeah, with the permit.
Oh, we're done.
You wanna trouble?
Yeah, this works, it, it actually works, but that's not included in our permit, what we want to change.
If they, if they change it, it's words, uh, exactly, then the permits hold. So Roger has said if they change the map and that permits. No, that is void, so we need that, have Roger here to tell us that before we. I agree with that, we need specifics, yeah, yeah. Think this Petersburg is our sole.
We'll, we'll work in a certain way, I mean, we have like no connection to the municipal, but.
I emailed the resolution with Petersburg to come back the jurisdiction area back to the county. And when it comes to industrial school. Become very close back to county.
So the, the two mile radius.
That's out.
This does not.
That's what Roger told me, yeah, he told me that it reverted back to the county and therefore they don't have that two, two mile fringe.
That, that ordinance, it's, um, West Corporation line with seventy fours, was our original, uh, ring power. They also had properties next to the fairgrounds south of seventy four. The town council didn't want that, they gave one of the, us for the original. There is a, there is a ordinance or resolution. I guess there's a couple years ago.
They have a leadership. On the north side of seventy four, yes, basically give it to the county.
Was that north of seventy four and, oh, what's that west gravel road going out to? Is that what you're talking about, that area?
It, it was all that area.
Yes.
From the main control.
Right, yeah. He's got to really go there.
Yeah, there wasn't anything on the north side of seventy four, now they're, they're doing all this land here.
Well, it was all north of seventy four.
Right, yeah.
There was only two, there was two, um, plots south of seventy four, which was the fairgrounds. So between one thirty six and seventy four originally, and the council said, asked. The county commissioners, you eliminate those two, so we can just do everything on seventy four.
Oh, now, I mean, this is all new.
All, all south of seventy four.
With, with it.
Well, I looked at the map on Karen, there were a number of parcels that were not included in the original. There were several, the north, north part of that map. Um.
It took off some.
Yeah, but I didn't know, I didn't know, is it, is it a new map or old map, and that's what I questioned. There was nothing to identify. When it was created, persons of the map were property, but I can tell you there's several parcels that are not included in that.
Roger told Aaron and I, after the commissioners meeting on Monday, that say Denise is in it and I'm in it. And they don't wanna take my parcel, they wanna pick up one more of hers, that that's not considered a new map. But if it's new everywhere, that's a different story.
And I wonder. Why is he selling all that?
That's from.
Hundred twenty, yeah. Does that make it, they buy some land and. They own it and, please think it from the right. And, but I, what, somebody said, part of that deed says that they still have interest.
The deed.
Are made.
The deed does not have, it's just on the sales disclosure, I had to question the county attorney. And consensus, it was, I haven't heard officially that from him. If it's not a deed, sales disclosure means far.
Yeah, because if it doesn't say in the, does it say something to the effect that in the event that the property would be sold again, that they have first rights?
Yeah, it's also important when they're retaining the map. But the deed does, it doesn't say anything. You know, if it comes down to legal documents, legal documents. If there's a problem with it, that's something that they'll have to create another, correct a deed with it.
Maybe they need, they need to talk to their attorney.
It's confusing.
Yeah.
Well, there's a reason or it wouldn't be there.
Yeah. Okay, so we will, you'll ask Roger, be careful. For you. We'll do that first thing. Okay, let's, are we ready to start?
Wouldn't know why you'd be confident in getting away the airs.
Let's go to the health first. Cause that's. And I'll, we, we. They asked them to. Keep our budget. And we provided. Funds and then they're going to receive the three hundred and sixty eight thousand dollars in state. And. I got a real problem with that, um, because. They're, they're spending a lot of money on. Things that.
Advertising.
Yes.
We're sitting here, they only have a thousand dollars re. Requestioned.
See, but this is kind of misleading because that's their budget for us, but then this is their internal budget, is that, I mean, that's how I.
That, that's their budget.
With those funds.
Yeah, and, I mean, the whole idea was. From the state to give us. Funding to kind of give us some tax relief from our taxpayers. And we're not giving them any relief. I mean, I think in that budget from the state's like fifty thousand dollars for advertising and.
Twenty, twenty, twenty thousand.
So that hasn't really, they didn't, they didn't fold in that money in here.
No, that's not included in.
Oh, see, this is all.
When that's.
The budget, all she had was what she had budgeted before.
Existed.
And then that came.
I felt like they.
Haven't had that very long.
Should kind of be on there, but.
Well, it's not on there, my house I've already advertised.
Yeah.
If you approve that, it's gonna have to be an additional beginning of the year because you can only. Appetite, or you can only. We wouldn't hear what you advertised.
Mm-hmm, no, no increase, you can decrease, but no increase.
All of this would be additional, everything that we, we fish.
And it would just need to come out of these funds when we do the additionals.
Right, and.
We need a money. It's the, like, person, I have written down that this money is included in that, not.
It is that it. They took this, didn't they take the forty eight thousand from the, um. Local public health, eleven sixty one. We won't get that anymore because we get this.
And we'll get together one, and then we'll get.
Forty eight thousand.
Right, oh, that's right, they combined them.
They combined it.
Yeah.
Well, not the forty eight thousand, but there's still money in there.
Mm-hmm.
And I know the, the money from the state. You can only spend, I think, forty percent on salaries.
Yes.
And so. So we're still gonna have to use some money from the, the county budget. But they're also putting in. Going to. Her county money, it's not showing them. Raises, but then they.
They're giving themselves a raise with their own.
Yeah.
State money. Yeah.
And she made a comment, if we give a raise to everybody else, they'd like a raise from the county in addition to what they're giving themselves.
Yes. But it was. What was Paul Grant calling?
Now they're asking thirteen hundred and twelve dollars on top of the original salary they estimated, or wanted, right?
What was asked?
There's thirteen hundred and twelve dollars here, right?
For one.
For health officer.
For the. Yeah.
So, over here on the original. Budget, they had twenty six, two fifty.
Right, so they're.
Plus for thirteen, twelve, fifty, it would be the new salary, yeah, I mean. And how it's paid is kind of. It's not all on our sheet. This is what. I don't understand, like, up here, they've got the. This person getting eight thousand dollars more. What's that, same thing as listed down there.
So she's taking this out of eleven sixty one, which is this, sorry, this, this over here. So she's gonna take, there's the eight thousand.
Okay.
And then the twenty eight ninety seven. But then she wants an addition too.
So this is.
This is an addition, no, this is in our booklet.
Who's that, forty eight?
Yeah.
It's Pep. It's eleven sixty one on the next page.
On those two grant signs that were no longer going to receive, there's like a hundred and fifty eight thousand dollars.
So what do we do about?
That includes eleven sixty one. And includes that.
So there's a hundred and forty eight thousand, and that is eleven sixty one. And. Eleven fifty nine, and eleven. And twelve oh six.
Eleven fifty nine, we have. Close to a million dollars, but. That can probably, you just want health department that we have, and it's not close, it's not much, it won't ever be. Lower the tax rate than that, because that's a building up so much, and we put. An increase into the county general, because the county general that needs to cover, close to covering. County general expenses. You know, I've. Got nine thousand dollars in here for. The case management risk assessment, you know. I don't know exactly what that's. That's for.
Someone new.
Well, I thought they said they weren't hiring any people.
But it's a, that's why it's a contract.
Yeah, contract, that, yes, yes.
It's not a normal, they're in a contract, that's uh.
Oh, and I think because the state made that a KPI, I think that's one of those things they have to do. For the state.
I know they have to, yes, contract some things out, but.
To get this money.
Get that money, but. I also think we need to. They need to use some of that for. Things that are taken out of county. Budget.
She, she called me today, so one of the things she had on here was vaccines on this state money, I don't know, does she have? She does have some things in here, she told me today, she called me, she said, I just wanted you to, she wanted to know about the meeting, if she need to be here, and I said, I don't, I don't know that you really need to be here, but. One thing she told me is, the state is saying that they have to buy no less than ten COVID vaccines. If they don't use them, they have to. Pay for them, all but like two. So. She said, that's one thing we have to keep in mind, the state's gonna make us pay for them if we don't use them. But they're requiring that we have to have at least ten.
So like things for any.
Mm hmm.
Aaron, what's your thoughts on? On which part? About the department?
All or none?
All or none. And? You have discussion. You're potentially doubling your budget. I know, that's what I'm trying to. I guess I'm asking. My concern is the year after, sure, because that money's gone. Are we gonna continue to have a budget of. Three quarters of a million dollars for the health department, because that's just what was expected.
Yeah.
Waiting in the health department, don't like this. Money was either.
As long as you show.
As long as the state supply, so there's gotta be a new governor.
Yeah.
That you knew knows what you're gonna do. But. We did.
I think.
We did know.
Some of that looks like it's double dipping.
But, yeah, that's, that's what I think.
It's hard to follow since the way she did it on two. Some things are in here and some things aren't, that's what.
And when they ask us.
In the, the sixty one. But I'm trying to go back and forth, that's not it's in that, and sometimes. Included in there. But it's just certain things, I'm trying to. Tell you which one. When I add those others, I will add everything that's on. The color print out. Because it's already in.
Right.
In there, so.
Um, I'm.
Trying to figure out, what's on that sheet that isn't included in here?
I know, we said we would.
Keep the budget.
Um, keep the budget, since. We didn't know what. This was at the time, now we know. And I mean. And when we've talked about, you know, they have a lot of money for advertising, well. All, everything you read billboards is the. The. Most. Non-cost-effective advertising you could do. And. Um. And, and I had a conversation with Aaron, I had a conversation with him, I mean. They put a flyer into their tax statements, so all of. Things they. Provide. Instead of spending all this money advertising, you could do some things that go in with that. The tax statements, Warren County does. I, they just looked at our tax statement from Warren County, and there was. Flyer from the health department of all things they do, there's a flyer in there about the air ambulance service. Uh, and it was. Flyer from the extension. Those are all in. Or mailed out with Warren County taxes, so. I think that. And you've been trying to, to do that, something that's gonna be hard to do.
No, but we source all that out now.
Well, I know we sourced it out, um. But. We have techs staff too, but. I mean, I would think it would, I mean, it's gonna cost something, but I think it would be. More cost-effective than putting out billboards and.
Yeah. Do the, are the, I can't remember how you got the text statement. Are they in envelopes, are they?
They're in envelopes.
Yeah, I don't know if. Round some on that or not, I, I, I don't have the answer to that.
Well, they charge, even next year. I think.
Right, oh, I agree, I'm just.
I, I think.
Because I don't mean arguing.
Learning center, the state will. But then you use one single dime of state funding or billboards, they send us. Horrible, and we.
We had it in there.
One time, we had a conversation with. Uh, Dr. Sharma, I told him, because he loved put billboards everywhere, and we said, we're not funding that. That's been a while, because Dick Clay was sitting here, we, we talked about that, and. And so I said, that was. And that's a waste of money, and council voted that. Stops spending on billboards, so maybe we need to. Now, I'm not. You don't want that. It's an open discussion, I don't wanna hog all the.
Wow.
Conversation, but I.
I'm, I'm with Denise. Uh, when you read this, like, okay, so they have internet on here for a thousand dollars. Okay? And, uh. We asked why rates had increased. But then on this page, she has internet for twenty seven hundred dollars.
It's fifteen, it's fifteen hundred.
Yeah, so, yeah.
My personal maintenance, there's thirty five hundred on here, and I don't. Most of it, some of it I can match up, but not all of it. And it's.
And then so on this one.
No.
No.
Uh, no, no one's on there now.
Yeah. I think, yes. I'm, I'm blessed.
If you take all these, these three months things, or whatever, thirty. Thirty three, thirty five, so those are pretty much.
All this is. Since this money is no longer, you'll get funded, the forty eight thousand, should have. I know, you know, you never budget more than that, but since. Does the state have to approve this one?
It was forty eight thousand.
The, yeah, eleven sixty one, so in this.
They had a previous year, this year, no, they, they.
So we gets. We can spend more of this money. Since that fund, and you. What I'm saying is use that up instead of it. Since this state fund, use this up first before we start.
And I don't know, I'm. Okay, so. If by resolution, you can take those other two funds. And put in.
The ones.
Ones. I, I think we have to put a resolution. You try to.
Then that would clear that out, since it's not.
Right, it's like that county general, two maintenance funds that we had, and it was. The state did away with the funding on that, so we found, we just did an invoice and closed it out to get it off the books, rather. Since we're not gonna get any money in the eleven sixty one, I'd say spend that money, keep our money into health department.
Mm hmm.
We, and maybe even. Lower that. Tax rate another half cent, but then in the county general.
Mm hmm.
More.
In there.
At this point, unless. You're gonna do the full budget, bring it through one thousand, and then you'll have them last about four years on that fund. But if we. Uh, use these other funds, cut this down, you can. Potentially have ten years worth of funding in that.
Yeah, because we have cushion there.
Yeah. Right, and. Uh, we do salaries here. Decide what percentage raise we need to cut these salaries in the county general. Or they sell it up.
Yeah, I don't, they're doing it both.
Yeah.
Did you see any like internet or anything on that? So I went through this, I went through this sheet, I don't know if you want to go down it, I can tell you the, the things that. Are in eleven sixty one or things that aren't, which would be easier.
Okay.
Which would be easier, what's included or what's new.
Yeah, what's new.
New, okay, so what's new that's not on the eleven sixty one page is. All the personnel stipend and benefits, so health officer, admin. Environmental one, registered PHN nurse, social security and retirement. Those things are all new. And then the lead risk assessor. That's a contract, that is new. That's new. And then that's not in eleven sixty one, and the next thing, the supplies are already in there. The maintenance is already in there. The programming support supplies for fifty thousand, that is new. Fifty thousand is new.
A lot of nicotine patches and fometers.
Yeah, that's all new. The. The next section. The. I don't know what, communication, trans, professional, I, training is what I figured that is. Um, five hundred is already included in eleven sixty one, so half of it. The printing and advertising is all new. The, the internet, that one, she had twenty seven on here and fifteen hundred on the other one, I can't figure that out. The next two are maintenance things that are basically included. The community partnership other for a hundred and sixty four plus, under sixty four thousand four eighty, that is new. And then renovations on the new building, that is new.
Mm hmm.
Um. Yeah, seeing that. Fifty thousand and a hundred and sixty.
That's a big ticket item, certainly.
Yeah. And.
Yeah, and that's what, that's, that's the, that's what the money's supposed to be for is new things. But some of them may, you know, like you say. Support supplies at fifty thousand, printing at twenty thousand, maybe that's. Too high, you know.
So of the three hundred and thirty eight thousand.
I don't know where she came up with those figures.
And sixty percent, I believe, you have to be.
For the non-salary things.
For, uh, for non-salaried, so two hundred and three thousand of that budget has to be for. Um, like the community partnership and the program, I think that's to bring in. The van or whatever, the mobile health units. But, um. The rest of that can be for.
Twenty fourteen.
Salary.
We have two big ones.
Make some of that off of.
So, that's more than sixty percent.
So the way it stands now with this two big ticket items, a hundred and sixty four, four eighty, and the fifty thousand, that's two hundred and fourteen thousand, four hundred and eighty dollars, that's more than sixty percent of that three hundred and thirty eight.
Mm hmm.
So that would work anyway.
No, that. Oh, well, then it has to be at least.
Okay.
So she.
Okay.
So she over that.
I thought it can be more than sixty.
They, they just take twenty thousand for printing and advertising, it's just. Way out of line. So you got. Blue vaccines, vaccine supplies, under office supplies. Vaccines and things in, yeah, I've up in this fund and. Office supplies. This is. If we told. If we were, it looks like I scared you. And. It's like, I scared you. So.
I'm fine.
If we told you, though, that we do it in, to go ahead and get this money from the state. Yeah. Then we start.
I agree with that, the only thing I would say is that, I feel like.
We told.
The, right. The forty eight thousand that. We were getting from the state. Should kind of come out more.
Correct, and we're. And gone from three hundred and thirty one. Well, this year. Three hundred and thirty one thousand to almost seven hundred thousand dollar budget.
Six seventy and some change.
On the budget for eleven sixty one, I think. It's easy to. Forget that budget. That was just. Increasing for DLGF. They know that this is coming. Which. In color.
In color. And yes, you know, there's. There's two because the team too, but. We need to forget that because it's included. In this one.
It is, yeah, the five thousand for the vaccines, two thousand, that's all in here, so we need to forget this.
Do we have any control over that?
Some, but no.
Because I know. Eleven sixty one, they always. Whether in different funds that we wanted to approve, we always changed it. So I don't, is this the same way or do we have to go with this? I don't know how the state program works now, since this is coming from state, if the council have. Any control over this.
Well.
Do the commissioners have any control over? Bills. Out this funding state. Do we know that?
Jenny's going to meet with the state, I think, next week. I think they're coming down to discuss that.
Okay, but I think. You could check with. DLGF. And find out what you have authority on. On the. Three hundred and thirty eight thousand dollars from the state.
HFI funding. HFI funding, I think that's what that's called.
Yeah. Who who who's that budget? Is it the? Health board or isn't it county council? That will answer a lot of questions, because it's. We all have to say this, and what, you need to tell us when you're to make this, our faces from the. Eleven thirty nine and eleven.
If you want to know who have the longs down HFI.
I know. The health board always. Sent us their request on eleven sixty one and we made the changes. What we want to do. But then in the health, they would have sent us this. We need to know if we have to say. Or this is.
Does anybody know? What MIH, though, a hundred and sixty four thousand? What MIH?
Mobile Integrated Health.
That's the, when they're bringing the buses and stuff, okay.
Their trailer, I think, when they take their trailer out.
Now, I do know Dr. Hesper did tell me that. All these contracts. Are gonna be written for one year, they're gonna. Have to. Oh, there's no guarantee they'll be funding. Point point six. We need to wonder, is somebody gonna invest funding to come in here?
I don't know, that's what she said, she's half afraid to hire a nurse, because. She said that if the funding leaves, then I have to let that person go. Because I, my department can't fund it without. That money.
But what's, what's the nurse? Funded that.
I don't know, this is would be an additional. Yeah, this would be an additional.
But that's why they're not, she's not, to do the, they really need another nurse, but they're not hiring.
I guess we really can't do anything on that until get those questions answered. Whether we have any control or not over that budget.
Maybe, like. Some of the rent could come out of that capital help way.
Well, and see, what, what do they need? Forty three thousand.
They set aside ten percent, but have no place. That's what, because we asked about.
About the renovation.
With that thirty three, eight fifty three, she said, you set aside ten percent, but we have no place. So maybe like, if we come out of that or something, eighteen thousand nine fifty.
And that would be my next question, then, is. So if they're not gonna do renovations, then they want to transfer that fund to one of these others. Because the council have to approve a transfer. Or, and there, does their board make the transfer?
Yeah, do they have free range over their budget or they like, yeah, I don't know how that works.
Really means. That budget, yes, if they wanna transfer money from one account to another. See, these accounts are number here, so. How does that? Work for you?
I have to plug it all.
When you have.
Have to plug it into, yeah.
Because you're, when they do the planning, you're gonna have to have a down number. And really should. Down number notes should actually eleven thirty nine, send your eleven sixty ones, because power, you want to know. Oh, salaries, it goes out of completely different accounts. Okay, so we can't, so that, so. If those questions, then it's gonna show up, give that. Thirty four, thirty two. Okay, want to go to uh? United one one. And this yours too? And I wanted to hear that day when she presented her budget, so I, I have questions, but I mean. Operator went up. Is, is she giving our operators a forty one percent increase?
Well, currently, she has ten full time, three part time, that included Dana. That was the amount of employees that she had, so.
So. Okay, now I see you're on statewide nine one one, but then. Um now, Davis is under twelve twenty two, Davis salary is not under.
Right.
And so is the depth, yes. And they're part time. So this is just operators. And how many operators?
She said ten full time, three part time.
Okay, so part time is on this twelve twenty two, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, got three operator, yeah. Two thousand three for five percent increase.
Three operator, okay. But, but those three, well then, once. Of these operators, it's gone from. Sixty three to three hundred and seventy three thousand.
No, she did not. So the part times broke up, so the part times broke up in a twelve twenty two and. Twelve twenty three, because. Warren County's paying part of that.
Our, yeah, that. Statewide nine one one fund is money from state. Uh you know, part time goes too, but I, you still don't understand on that. How the county general.
Why their operators. I don't remember her saying anything that stuck with me. Do you guys? Jeff's got some notes.
Raising our operators coming out, but she only has two lead officers.
She's asked. Has it for three?
Well, yeah, so it's forty one percent, I, I mean, that's a forty one percent increase, so. Gotta be either that. Hiring another person or.
But if she's hiring another person, the group's.
We have to redo this.
But if she's hiring another person, group health hasn't gone up that much. To. In twelve twenty three. Does group help come out of non-reverting all of it?
Three operators out of twelve twenty two.
Group health is coming out of. There's three, in twelve twenty three.
Yeah, that's a percent increase in quality pay, they're not probably paying that, but that means. More employees.
What she have on that paper that she gave us?
Does she have?
It, it's gotta be.
Well, we're.
For operator, because she only did a five percent increase for. The three operators under. People, how many operators?
Yeah.
Yeah, but two of, at least two of them.
Yeah, just the two lead.
Um this year is two sixty. As you say, they're all at the same thirty six. That's forty three thousand.
I think that's a great idea. I hate that.
I think it'd make payroll easier, if you keep doing like, having line item for lead operators. And line item to.
Same line item, I'm gonna have to split them and figure it as.
It, it just costs more work. For payroll where.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, so this year's budget. Six operators would be forty three thousand eight seventy nine, if they were all paid the same, instead of a couple or different.
Yeah.
Okay, you have. At the request, budget request for twenty twenty five, it was just for six operators, and she's taking them to sixty two thousand two oh two.
So how many, there's two CTOs.
Two lead operators. Like this, read down a little sheet she handed out, all six of them were paid the same amount in twenty twenty four, but in twenty twenty five, she's requesting a five percent raise for four of them. And an eight percent raise for the two.
That's how she's doing it.
So this year, they were all made the same.
Correct, that's what this.
Forty three, eight, seven, nine.
Forty three, four thirty four is what this says.
I, I did adopt a budget divided by six people. But divided by three seventy three by six people, it comes to sixty two thousand.
Okay.
And if. I did. Seven people, adding one new, it's still, it was fifty three thousand.
So.
That's. Something's not right here on that, those figures that she's got.
Yeah, that doesn't make sense.
But there's, I mean, it's budgeted first. But she, she never has. But it's all in the same line item, so you gotta figure it. It's a huge.
Well, the other issue, overtime is. A huge increase. China, she's asked for more, I guess she would.
The overtime, I, did she go like with the highway, I know they work. Do they work twelve hour shift? And did she start paying them overtime, like, okay? So that, I would say in our overtimes.
Hundred and twenty thousand. Oh, no, that's a total, that's a, have your online.
Ten thousand, okay, ten thousand. Since she's all about time in, in the, yeah.
Yeah.
Twelve twenty three. So.
Yeah.
Forty, I mean. Over forty thousand. Now fifty thousand. Fifty thousand between the three lines. And overtime. You have her sheet that she filled out for the.
Do you think she put the two leads and the operators?
They're, they're all together.
They're all together.
They're all the same, like, in the same line item. Um, like. One oh two oh six, whereas operator, that's the leads and.
So I took the two sixty three, two seventy eight, which is what was adopted for this year.
Okay.
And divided that by ten.
Five, six regular.
She has eight.
Eight, yeah.
Okay. Two leads. Six, right.
Lead operators, eight percent raise and the other. Regular operators, five.
Who says four there? Which on this paper she gave us, she only had four operators. Yes, the two leads and then she has the four. So that's not right either.
Right, so how many? I wonder if she.
Unless we're reading it incorrectly.
And that's why it's gone up so much, she's.
She counted.
Twice, if they're in here or somewhere else.
Okay.
There's no operators in twelve twenty two. And there's. Twelve twenty three, looks like there's. Probably three, three operators, so she doesn't have. Eleven operators, right? How many is on payroll?
She told me ten.
So there's. Where. And she has. One operator. Too many on her.
We have a lot of operators, leading leads, and then the. Director and deputy directors.
Well, that's, that's.
So that's thirteen people.
Ten full, three part time. Why is it? What? Twenty twenty four adopted. And. That's included, that means. That, that's hundred and ten thousand dollars increase. That shows forty one percent, so.
So did she take it out of something and throw it into here, and that made it different? Did she take, uh, did, taking it out of? Twelve twenty two, did she throw it into? General?
I don't. Think so, because you said she had.
There's eleven, she, on her budgets. You got eight there, three here, plus the directors.
Right, plus the director and co, but how many are on the actual payroll?
Yeah. I think I missed one. There's nine. I think there's nine right now, and once. Getting ready, like a floater position, she's getting ready.
She's getting ready, come on.
That's.
Yeah, but she'll go like. Yeah, it's like.
So that's, it's nine right now, seeing this is. Thirteen, it's eleven plus two, so something's not.
Yeah. One thing she did say, she, computer software, that's that caliber system, she's moving that, she's gonna move that to contractual, so that's just. One thing she did say, she, computer software, that's that caliber system, she's moving that, she's gonna move that to contractual, so that's just. An, a line change, no. Change in amount of money.
Repair maintenance, um. Did she say what?
She said that's the cali, she said that was the caliber, um, the maintenance fee for them to come in and. I, yeah, cause it's like fifty, it's like fifty-seven thousand something when it.
Okay.
It's almost sixty dollars.
Yeah.
Yep.
So basically, it's coming down to the employees and the increase.
Yes, I mean, we, we just gotta find out how many employees she has, so we'll have to deal with that.
Got it.
And I just ran some others in non reverting. She hasn't appropriated enough for social security. But another thing is. We're not gonna get enough revenue in twelve twenty-three to support the budgets submitted.
I know.
Same as twelve twenty-two. Twelve twenty-two, yeah, twenty-three thousand.
Well, except if.
I know what she did.
July first, we make Warren County. A. What they shorted us this year, plus go back to the. The other.
You know what, yeah. Can, can we have an answer, yeah, for the county general? She did two operators, lead operators. And they're gonna be forty-nine thousand seven ninety-one twenty-four.
That, and that's.
That's with the eight percent raise.
Yeah.
Two of those and then six operators. And they're gonna be with a five percent raise of forty-five, six oh six.
Oh, that's just not.
No.
Not correct.
Time six.
Yeah, because she's, yeah.
Eight percent, but see, that shows only.
Maybe she got these wrong, then I can go on by.
Because I went off the salary. So, on, so that's with the eight percent raise. For the leads.
Okay, and then there's six.
Equals.
And it's seventy-three, three seventy-three.
Six, six.
And then sure, two seventy-three, it's just not.
Two seventy-three.
Be right.
Yeah, three, six thirty-six.
Five hundred forty-one percent, right, so.
And then two times, forty-nine, nine seventy-one.
Forty-nine, seven.
Or seven, two times forty-nine, seven ninety-one. Is ninety-nine, five eighty-two.
Okay.
Plus, two seventy-three, six thirty-six.
Or.
Is three seventy-three, two eighteen, that's what it is.
Yes, okay, so I gave you, I wrote one of the directors. Yeah, she, she's high. Yes, I did that. And and that's, that came from that, what she. What, she got what she. Right, that came from association Indiana counties, and I only gave you copies of all the counties. That are similar size to Fountain County, does you all the different. Um. Salaries in those counties. Uh, you look. Then you've got police and jail employees were probably the highest one of. All the. Student counties in our size. By a lot. But then, we just love that, um, repair. Public health nurse, I mean. Um, one county the same size as us, it's three thousand. A year more. But most counties are anywhere from twenty to. Fifteen thousand less than that, two thousand. Look at our. Highway department, repair. Yeah, our. You look at our deputies in the courthouse, they are one of the lowest paid of all counties in our state. So you gotta really take a look at salaries.
Mm-hmm.
Very lopsided. And I know the judge talked about. Failures. If not, but. Counties our size, it goes from. Thirty-nine thousand to thirty-eight thousand to eighty thousand. Spencer County, okay. Well, I could make Spencer County, they don't have going forward, I would thought, but. Spencer County pays thirty-four, they will be eighty thousand, but they're former board members. And just. I question that because. Everything else in the counties into thirty thousand, so I think, wonder if that's a misprint, but. I mean, we're pretty. Close on. Court reporter, when you have the. Nine counties the same size as us, or.
That's Spencer County?
Spencer, yes. Um, nine counties same size as us, the court reporter were. Number two in salary.
I think we're, we're in with range.
Yeah, so. I know more operators or. But yeah, so that's what this is, I, I can't give it out for you, um. But you don't look at that, you're gonna go on, make a decision, but I, I don't think. We should be going across the board on salary rates this year, if we need that. Big loss. Thanks for the adjustments and tips, everybody.
So, from what Kim, from what Kim gave us on the figures. I did the math, three seventy-three, two eighteen. For the twenty twenty-five, it, that's, that's right, that equals what that number is.
Two leads.
The two leads and the six operators.
How many operators?
Six.
Six, no.
Which she's put down three seventy-three, two seventeen, so I came up with three seventy-three, two eighteen.
Right, but.
We need to find out she has that.
Right.
Does she really have? The operators, well.
Right.
Because she had.
Uh, three. Yeah, director and deputy.
That's ten, she only has two.
And three on the.
So she had it.
Three operators, oh, three operators on the.
Yeah, well, that's way too high.
Thirteen, that's right, that's why I think this number.
I think she included two extra operators in there.
I think they're. Yeah. And that's the only reason, this year. If it's two leads and six operators, dispatchers, they were only getting two hundred and sixty-three thousand.
So you're thinking out of those six operators, there's probably.
Should be.
Part time, yeah. Or in the other.
Three of them should come out of county general, three of them should come out in twelve twenty-three.
Yeah.
Right.
And then two leads out of county general, right?
She hasn't correct her budget at all this month, and I'm. I'm thinking. She didn't correct all the sheets.
Okay.
Yeah, I think she took three to me. Yeah, out of county general is what it should be.
Yeah. So it is.
And then three operators. And her and Jamie are on a.
That, okay, so that number in twelve twenty-three, non reverting, the one thirty-six, eight, one, eight, you divide that by three, it comes out to forty-five, six oh six, which is the number you gave us, Kim.
Yeah.
So she's at, three, three of those need to come out of general then.
County general, yeah.
Yes, I, I, I think so. But just that was.
My god, my paper's all marked. All these notes.
You must.
Okay, so we're. I don't, I don't see where there's anything else that could really be cut. Except we, you know.
Salary.
On the salaries, right, but I mean, as far as expenses. Um, you know, contract, definitely you did a lot of contract, that was your biggest expense. Increase there and. Uh, group health, did group health go up?
We haven't got the numbers for twenty-five yet.
Go ask her why there's a fifty percent increase in holiday pay. She paying on the old net.
I think that, um, because it went up to one fifty. And she, last year she budgeted from one hundred.
Okay.
When she turned in her budget, it was for the one hundred per. I know she was short.
Well, twenty twenty-three, they have thirty-seven hundred, so. And you think she was short fifty. Dollars per day, and that would, that would make sense, so, okay. Okay, let's go to this one, yes. And we'll, we'll have to decide on. Hold them and do the same with this. Uh, county gross free, I think, um. You know, that's a service. A.
In and out.
A collected fee from the court, so they can all spend what they, uh. Collect and, yeah, do that. Led special purpose. Will need, um.
Well. I did. Appropriate in other certain charges. Maybe too much, but. I'm trying to avoid asking for additional next year in case the grinder does not get paid all in.
Okay, if, does it get installed and.
Right.
Pay it out this year is a better, and then that's all right.
Had enough on face, though.
Yeah, well.
Why we were asking for six hundred and forty-five thousand dollars?
I saw one comment, we can build a new jail for what that. Yeah, but. One million for a grinder building, tear down the building, building.
But the reason for that is. When this budget was set for twenty-four, that bid had not come in and. You know, they were asking why so high? Why can't we? Estimate better. Well. We bidded out twice, the commissioners bidded out, not we. Bidded out twice, we only had. It was the same person that bid twice. He did drop his bid, I believe, by like almost six hundred thousand dollars, cause I think at beginning it was one point seven, then it came back. To about one point one, whatever that was.
Right.
So it is cheaper, but. When the budget was set. Yeah, that's, it was like approximately five hundred thousand, I think, that was just for the grinder, but everything's went up since then.
Mm-hmm.
So that's the reason.
I mean, there was only one person that bid.
I think the, and I think the first time he bid, he just kinda threw a number out there.
Yeah.
Seeing if it would stick.
Yeah.
Yeah. And, uh. That's not here, so.
No, and, and. Um, I do have a question on this lit special purpose. This is what you advertised, two million, two million, so we can't increase that, right?
You have to turn additional to increase.
Okay, I just thought. We should. We should have budgeted more for next year, in case you do a nine-one-one building or something out there, now you're gonna have to do an additional. Um, if you guys do that next year, if we budgeted, then you wouldn't have to do that, cause. Or say now, they spent more money to build.
Mm-hmm.
Next building.
Because you can only use the. The lit for the jail, and. Hopefully, I mean. Sharon Nagel told me you could use it for nine-one-one, but she'll be out, so we'll, you know, probably have to get another opinion from legislation whether. Or we might need to. Have them, and Spencer, Larry told me to do whatever. Need to be done to help with legislation that people cannot, you can use those funds for that, but.
Then, most gladly. We started off with a jail lapse.
Well, that's because the special is a special tax on people's income. To build a jail, and it can only be used for building the jail, it can't be used for expensive of the jail. But if you need to. Replace some of their building. Building wise, like the grinder, we can use that for that. But I'm told that you could use that, fund those funds for. We add on nine-one-one or coroner's office out there at building sites.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and I know at one time Terry had talked about wanting a. Garage built out there to store things, and the state suggests you can use that for that.
Could have stayed within that jail money and.
Yeah, so that, that's.
So how long are we tied to that?
Well. Until the jails paid off. And she, and I don't know, but. You know. We're collecting a lot more than what jail, the bond payments are. But the rate's so low, we don't. You know, when we first did it, I thought, oh, great, we can pay it off in eleven years and. But now, you, you don't. Bond rates, I think you're wise to keep. That in there until the twenty years. And then what happens? At the end of the twenty years, when the jail is paid off. You can. I've got to double check on this, but it was either you can spend it on other operation of the jail. Or we have to have the legislature. Pass legislation that it could use for the operation of the jail, or you can transfer it into county general once the bonds are paid off.
But we don't have to have legislation to transfer?
Well, I. Been a while since I talked. The legislature about that and, um. Phil Boots told me exactly how we. Could do it, not, I have to look through my notes, but I, I think you can transfer to county general. Or you can use it for. Um. Operation of the jail. I believe the tax. Expires when the. Bonds are paid for, then, then it reverses to zero. But I, I know at the time I talked to. Phil, Phil and Sharon, when they wrote up legislation, this tax on, and what I told him was that. And they said they would, that, at that time, they would write legislation. To keep the tax rate. Special lit, because we could, jails paid off, you can use it for operation of the jail. And they were gonna do that if we dropped. The, um. Either the seated or. The, uh. Special.
Purpose.
Purpose, but if we drop those. And. And I was okay with that, I mean, because. This county gets to keep every dime of it.
Mm-hmm.
The seated and the special. Purpose, we have to split up with all the cities and towns, but get nothing. From them. Yeah, public safety, public safety, see that we have no share. Yes, we don't have to share, and they wanted us to drop, I mean, the. The agreement when they wrote out this legislation is that we would either drop this or drop those two. When jails paid off. And I prefer to keep this, drop the other two, because it's more money of the county's.
Mm-hmm.
But that'll be. Somebody's decision here at the moment. All years or whenever jails paid off.
Yeah, I know Sharon told you. What she thought we could do with the money. What specific department would we need written clarification from? On what we could actually do?
Uh, Spencer Gary can get that, the state senate. He can, he can check, because I've been talking to him about those sober panels and. He's, uh, he's gonna work on some legislation. To make it mandatory, counties put in. A lot of. Rulings in your solar ordinance. So that people don't have problems like we did, so, um, he's working on that, but. They can have their legislative base, check all that, that's what Sharon did, she had her legislative base checked.
The one other thing, the nine-one-one. Be part.
As long as, as long as.
Yes, that's what I'm saying, you're getting, getting right, getting right, yes.
So should, so should we increase this, should we ask for an increase or no?
We can't, that's already been, that, so it'll have to be a.
An additional.
Additional, and you get an additional something.
Right.
But, yes, it would, thought about it sooner, I sort of. Tally and advertise it. Higher. I know, no, I know, I, but, but. But that's better. That cover bridge maintenance, that is. That's a money that's in state, right, it's in this money. We have, just remember there's the point oh oh five. On the tax rate. It goes for cover the bridge, but the state won't let us set up a separate fund, so I'm just, I've given Carol every. Tax settlement in November, May and November, I've given her a paper of how much. I gotta find my sheet, because they're spending some of that money now. Uh, and I. Okay, but I don't think I include that under, maybe didn't include. Maze. Maybe I'll figure, find my figures, cause I, I've kept track of it and give Carol every. Six months of how much money was in there, so she knew how much she could spend on the cover bridges. So, and and the easy way to track that is. Uh, the same rate as the accumulation voting system, so. I'll leave that up to you guys to keep track of that and so we know how much. Of the king bridge fund is for covered bridges. And that one, until. You vote to remove it, that is in our ordinance. You did it the same as the king bridge, just so it's easier for me to track how much to tell Carol once they have, so. And I'll find, I, I know we collected, but I think it started twenty two. Twenty two, twenty three and this year, so I've got each. Tax settlement, how much was collected, so. Always went to the meeting to tell them what they have, so they have it also, that kind of the. Since they're doing repairs now, which spending it, but. Uh, once that's repaired, it needs to be kept up so that. Use it for Wallace and get that bridge done and, and having it can use it to. Is that?
Yeah, it may fall in before it's.
Yeah.
It's done, yeah, it's in bad shape. It's a smaller bridge and it will take less money.
I, I went down there.
Did you walk across it?
If you want. I'm gonna get this done and you care all the while. Okay, so two capital development, uh, your county owner that.
That is fine, that's half of my software for the treasury line, financial taxing. That's half, the other half comes out of county general.
Okay.
And the equipment. That probably can be cut. Um, that was for the scanner, I have since. Shipped that to the recorder because we're done. Um. I didn't ask for money to put those online. A lot of those. And they're on. Flash drive and um. So the recorder has taken it to do hers and she's taking it with the paintings on it. So that, that could be cut from my budget.
Got that maybe.
You couldn't have it, I mean, if you're needing funds, I mean. I don't know, unless she wants to keep it, we are gonna need scanners for the remote clean process, but we do have so many. That we should have left in our. Yeah.
Leave a thousand dollars.
Okay. One thousand.
Yeah.
Uh, two capital development, the county. For equipment and the automobiles down to zero, because you bought their free. With money we had this year, so we can cut that out. I don't remember, Paul, when he said he needed repair or maintenance.
That's what she knows.
Yes, but, you know. Maintenance is. Okay, and but any repairs is that should be.
This is like cars here or.
Okay.
I was thinking Moe, and I thought he talked about that last year.
Oh, okay. Okay, now. Uh, county mentioned the two capital development, opposite storage and backup and. As the computer maintenance is at um. Brad's contract, so it's. Fifty five thousand this. Is that what we paid this year, should we pay more? Maybe pay it out of something else.
I love that, that what she sent us, that showed his invoices and between. Ours and nine one one every month, that was right around that seventy five.
Some of that is salary comes out of nine one one budget.
We bill that separately. Yeah, from nine one, because we can take it off both our uh, piece of report. And helps.
So ours is like fifty five oh eight a month, that's what. Which is sixty six thousand. About that two twenty or two eight, uh, that's nine one.
I just, like a lot of it's extra, I just. Why did it fifty five oh eight times four, so it's fifty five thousand.
I don't just. I don't see, I must not have made a copy of the IT thing, but.
His contract this year is fifty five thousand. And that is. There's more computers now than there was and. I think. I think he picked up. They were using somebody else. And they have switched Brad and he's out of this on just contract, is that right?
Yeah, I think so.
Paying fifty five oh eight a month, according to these color PC invoices, yeah, that's what we pay, so that's sixty six thousand a year. Not, I don't know what fifty five thousand contract comes from, okay. Okay.
Six, sixty seven.
Some point, I think you guys need to be. Okay, yeah. That would be a full time.
We've talked about that.
I know.
Several times.
Four years now, and that, it doesn't think, that just keeps going up and. But then you're gonna have.
Benefits.
Benefits, so you know, I don't know at this point. Whether it's uh.
He does, Jamie. The sixty seven plus. I mean.
For all of those.
But now the health department, do they not have?
I noticed that there's nothing in there unless it's in the blue. That blue paper she gave us with the HFI stuff on it. Nope. Unless I'm. Bleary eyed from being tired, um.
See anything in there?
An extra three thousand. He's picked up help.
They have to pay. Back, they all took that one point, who they were paying.
I think it was wrong.
Yeah, right, yeah, wow, yeah, that's right, you're in contact and. Uh, I don't see.
I don't see any line item in here that says computer maintenance. And she didn't have anything on this HFI paper either, taking it out.
He set the bar high, I mean, but.
Really did.
Okay, but I mean, I mean, I don't think at this point, especially. Space capacity. At some point, you guys will need the. Yeah, I'll judge if we're in back, so at some point you're gonna need to uh. Maybe look at that, think about it. And that, that is in the, the new book that. Colleen has. There is a. But I, I don't believe. At this point, there was any counties that are our size that had IT, it might have been one out of the.
It's coming out of. County health fund, line item thirty three six oh three, you may wrong. But he must still be in.
Thirty three six oh three.
I see housekeeping, maintenance and repairs.
Out of what?
Three thousand dollars. Eleven fifty nine. Thirty three six oh three towards the bottom.
Three six oh, okay, yeah. Ensure the.
Yeah, that's not.
Okay, so two capital development, government, building courthouse. And we're looking at everything except values. Fifty thousand, they're gonna be improved utilities.
Yes.
Is the snow removal still done by someone else, what is the story there?
It's all or none, if you go with smarts, it's all or none.
There was still the contract with them, it's up.
You're still paying. And that contract's probably gonna renew in the next month or two, I would say probably in October.
We. Had this discussion that we've. Were only, we only wanted. Because we have a janitor and we have a lawn mower, but. They said they could, if anyone to. Do just no removal, they wanted to contract.
They come out about nine o'clock.
I shovel the foundation, I'll do it for eight thousand years here.
He does, I mean, he does, yeah, he did a good job.
Scotty, Scotty Griffin.
I agree.
Yeah, they don't.
Yeah.
Rick will usually shovel a path for us.
I agree. It's a good one.
They can shovel their own. Okay, so I, I don't see anything. There begins to take any changes. Two capital development, repair maintenance of the jail.
Yes, they're probably gonna want to change that because. I denies any planes that would. Be paid out at special purpose. I didn't think they were appropriate. And I was told. You need to tell the council to give us more money. Because what they were buying, they were buying. Fires. Or tow bag. And screwdrivers. And I didn't think that was chicken bellies. That's when I was told that this is.
That's all I did is.
Relate the message.
Okay.
Duly noted. Duly noted. Not killing the message.
I mean, yeah, it's, it's same amount, it's been in the reward action.
There's a ditch that's filling with water and. Greg is. Working on giving that best.
Million dollars, which those fifteen reserved to take care of the landfill. In the twenty twenty eight. Whether they'll let us.
They may not let us out at that time. They'll come and inspect and probably find something else.
Yeah. So they're the ones gonna make the decision whether.
The landfill got the snow.
Okay, two capital development, parks and recreation, um. You know what, man, I got. Guy that was mowing it for free and then he had that house and then I was mowing it at all.
Somebody's mowing it, a portion of it, not as much as what he was doing. Uh, what was his name, uh, Michael T. Garden.
Yeah.
Was doing it.
I tried to, you know, you can come in here, get some money for his gas, I said, go in there, we got money back to him.
Somebody's mowing on both sides of the lane. Going down to five crossings park, but nobody's mowing. North. Yeah.
So, I mean, we don't, we spent four and forty seven and twenty twenty three, that was just to fill all these, so.
We've had a clean one for a couple years. When Zach was mowing it, I used to get a gas bill. Or if you have, maybe it's in the tractor or something, but.
Uh, riverboat revenue. And have we received, notice what that area is gonna cost this year?
No, we paid forty eight thousand last year, I know we added some loans, that's the reason why I went to. Which is the same as last year.
I assume everyone wants to continue with that program.
Yeah.
Uh, county farm, um. I would take that, we would take that, it'll eat out the um.
Automobiles.
Yeah, why don't we do um, capital.
Alley or something.
Yeah, capital. Alley or something, that's. Actually, I'd say. Six thousand a year. Approximately forty six, so let's um.
I would potentially think that could go down because county farm leaves one third, two thirds, and farm income is going to be down considerably. So, I'd be careful, just keep that in mind. The farm may go down, another some in there, so okay.
Yes, I, I think, we have hundreds and some thousand.
Okay.
Yeah, I think you have.
We may not get the usual forty, fifty thousand. We may not get the usual forty, fifty thousand.
Just spend twenty five thousand in there that I have to have.
In county farm, it was four hundred and thirty five thousand.
Oh, oh, I guess we got that money from.
I say we leave it at fifty something, fifty two thousand then, just a freeze.
Yeah. Oh, no, I mean, no, then, no. Cause that's under county sheriff, so the sheriff gets that, we need to.
Then he can buy flyers.
Uh, we talked about giving the commissioners some leeway on.
There you go.
To give them a.
Yeah. It's a good idea.
Get their trust. We have to show our trust and they show their trust to us and so let's change that county sheriff to county commissioners. County farm and the capital room of fifty thousand, equipment eighteen thousand.
Does that mean that eighteen thousand equipment was shared and then so we're taking that away from the sheriff?
Uh, well, I think that was. Eighteen thousand to convert it to, um.
Leave the amounts the same, but we're changing that.
Right. Sheriff's knows that we're getting that. We're gonna leave eighteen thousand and. And make that fifty thousand capital improvement. Yes, very.
And then fifty.
Fifty capital improvements. So it'll be sixty eight thousand total.
So.
No, we're keep.
But it is eighteen thousand. And fifty thousand.
Yes.
Okay.
And this is why we're, well, we're not gonna do anything with this, or maybe until you find out.
Okay.
Yes.
When I was going through. What was paying to. We get. This. What I reported at the meeting was just off of the ledger, the actual expenses I gave tonight. I was, we need to go in and do a reduction appropriation and that is the proper way to do it. Because what the difference is, is the amount that was spent in October to the end of the year. After the budget was set, I changed it up to the time that we adopted the budget, I get the. Yeah, reducing it after the span. And that's what I noted following that, you know. I would like to do a reduction appropriation to make sure that that. Is correct. On the whole.
So take the we get money out.
Yeah. When I looked up on the ledger. It was three hundred and thirty eight thousand. And that. That is actually what we have left, is that two. And I I do have the sheets where I figured it. You know, this is my copying.
Okay.
And the difference between yes, what we spent the last spring. This is what we spent, see from October. Which is the difference between that and while I recorded the note. And I know we were gonna give that, I would have been prepared, but. I did not know.
Okay, so we need.
I think so.
No, no, that is the correct thing.
That's the correct.
I reported that we had three hundred and thirty eight. Because I was one off the ledger and I.
Okay.
So now the, so the twenty twenty five adopted should be the two fifty nine oh thirty three then?
Yeah.
Okay.
Twenty twenty four adopted needs change, I don't know what you want to change, Colleen.
Well, I'm talking about, I wanna do reduction appropriation for the twenty four budget.
To get it right.
And then on. Twenty fives. We need to. Change that by batch.
Well, oh. We're gonna figure out what we can put back if if we can.
Right.
So. So the twenty twenty four adopted budget was three thirty eight, six thirteen. But they only have two fifty nine, oh thirty three, sixty six, so you want a motion to?
I don't know if I need a motion, it's really gonna. It's the same process, there's an additional, I'm gonna have to advertise it. And then you guys will have a hearing. And vote on it. So I really don't need a motion at this point.
Cause there isn't that much money in the adopted budget. So you need to advertise that if you're voting.
Yes. And also when I talk to D L G F, I'm getting part for. When we went through my budget workshops. We cannot fund highway and he suggested, Phil Grant suggested we do a reduction appropriation. In M V H. So that. We maybe don't have to cut so much because what D L G F does, they they assume you're gonna spend every penny that you got appropriated. And we never do that, so he suggested going through and reducing some of those line items so that.
It'll show we have more money starting in the first of the year.
Or or two additional or.
Right.
And then do a difference to put it back.
So, okay, so you could get with Jason and figure out what you can do reduction to do that. Then maybe we would have. Okay. Yes.
Money's been appropriated. Bits are gonna be due October, it's gonna be. Anything need to be done? If no builds or things till twenty twenty five. On the on the Friday down at Five Crosses Park. Is there anything that can be done?
Moving on to the council for money.
So when you would this.
I do want, I wanna correct something when I started the meeting, I said that. You need to need our meeting because. They'll be discussing budgets, so we are going into recess now until seven. At six P M. With our budgets.
So do we, in our, do we still have a million dollars in there?
According to this. But. Beers included in that and also the hundred fifty.
So. But but, so my question is. I mean, we're not only, we're not only act a lot with you. So we're, we're gonna do that many dollars. Well, that's what she's working on, see if we can put it back in county. Where you can pay for something. But what was it, the Jill's throw, one of the?
Oh, it's the.
Yeah, you almost. I mean, do you want me to?
They were just wanting the kids, the guys that are working on the, uh. Drawings and engineering of the, of the steps, the makes. Those guys need to be paid and they're not. Well, that's what I was talking to.
But see, we. We we betched it for town, they didn't spend it all on that line, so I. I would think that if they turned in a bill for that work.
Is it related to the project, is now, the same project?
Though it just says, it says town on the hill.
There's, there's a contract.
There is a contract, okay.
I mean, it doesn't keep us from getting another contract.
I think. I think we need to figure out what it can be used for.
Yes, that's.
And then we can decide.
I think we need to get that all. December thirty first, so we don't have to turn anything.
So are candidates for sidewalks reconstruction?
Yeah, we're looking at some other things first, but. Reimburse or lose or.
Yeah.